Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting this May 3, 2022. Thank you all for being here. It's a rather light agenda, not knowing where we're going, thank you, not knowing where we're going to be in the process. I just want to alert the commission that I do have to leave the meeting at five minutes to three. I have a special meeting that's been called for the Tourist Development Council, which I'm an ex officio member on behalf of the city to discuss F1. So.
Are you going to trust the vice mayor to actually?
I'm going to trust the vice mayor.
Do that? I don't know if that's wise. Commissioner Glassman, is that?
Well, I suggest we try to wrap it up before three.
Wrap it up before three? That's probably the safer thing for the city mayor. That's probably the smart.
Better to be safe than sorry.
You keep your commission comments to a minimum, which I'm not going to hold my breath, but. Okay, so I'm trying to get to the agenda here. All right, just, okay, so we have a couple of communications. The first one is from the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board. This is a motion and a motion that was sent to us to discuss the possibility of a campaign to discourage people from giving to panhandlers. I believe that was attempted in the past. Mr. Ballow, do you have a comments on that?
Just to the extent that campaign, you know, that we looked into, since we are under a current injunction on panhandling with the case that's pending in federal court.
Could you speak into your microphone a little bit?
Yes, sorry, I thought I was. Since we do have a pending case regarding panhandling in federal court, we are under an injunction. So we looked at that issue, but we find with regards to any proposed campaign, there wouldn't be a bar to it because of the injunction, as long as it's limited to us conveying the message that you should refrain from giving versus addressing the actual panhandling itself. So we should be fine in that regard.
Well, is that in the form of like billboards or public service announcements or?
That I don't know. I don't know what's being proposed, but it would be permissible as long as that's it's on that one side where we're trying to dissuade doing it in intersections and other places that may be dangerous.
Commissioner Glassman, this is in your district, although not exclusively in your district, but the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board is, do you have any thoughts on this? Have you been consulted on this? What do you want to do?
No, I did read it and we discussed it briefly last night at my pre-agenda meeting. But I mean, I guess something like this, if it's going to be a public service campaign, I would imagine that PIO would think about something or present something, or maybe we can discuss it more specifically at a conference agenda. But it seems that, I mean, a campaign is more than just, you know, a press release. So I don't, I don't know. I haven't heard much about it.
I just, I personally, I understand the reasoning behind it, but I personally think it would make the city look like, you know, we don't want to help people in need and, you know, we're discouraging people from doing that. Here we go all over again with Arnold Abbott, and I just feel, it just doesn't seem right. I mean, I truly do not believe we should be giving anything to people who are standing in the middle of our streets, you know, asking for assistance. But at the same time, you know, doing a public service announcement might be misinterpreted. And I don't know, does anyone have any other thoughts on that? Commissioner, do you have any thoughts on that?
Go ahead, Ben.
Oh, Ben, vice mayor.
Sure. This is something I encourage when I talk to folks in the community. I just encourage them, hey, we have great service providers out there and just encourage you to support those where people who are struggling with homelessness can get the resources. So that's what I try to encourage and we, you know, I know you all know we have some great resource guides to give out. So I think the message is a good one to share with folks of here's how to best help people. And Chris and I have actually talked about this because it's come up in our, my district periodically. Chris, didn't we, we were looking at some kind of signage? Weren't we talking about some kind of signage around these lines of how to, you know, encourage folks to direct support?
Correct. Yeah, we were talking about signs and potentially even billboards that would direct people to appropriately donate and not donate at the curb. We did put some of those up at the intersection of US 1 and 17th Street.
That's what I thought we did.
They were promptly removed.
Yeah.
And that unfortunately seems to be the case sometimes when we try to put street signs up to that with that message on it. But I'd have to, gosh, that's been some time. So right off the top of my head, I'd have to pull my notes out and see what.
Yeah, and they were removed, Mayor, I think it was. We put up some signage to help and then, you know, some folks like broke, like broke off the signage. So again, I think the message of here's ways to really help our folks who are struggling is a good one. And maybe that's something PIO could kind of look into about how to share that. And maybe if it's email camp, I don't know, but yeah.
We'll pitch that to Greg. He's nodding his head and he'll take it to our homeless outreach group.
That's a possibility. And I know Commissioner Maritas wanted to say something too.
Well, yeah, I agree with your comments and it's something I also discuss at my meetings. And I know it's discussed at the HOA meetings when the police come. So I think there is somewhat of a campaign. It's just not maybe on the street corners where everyone's seeing it. So I do think there's a way we can message it correctly where we say, if you really want to help, do this. It can't be, don't give to panhandlers. That's just not the right message. But it has to be something like, you know, help the homeless by blank and don't give to panhandlers, you know, with the subtitle. So I think there's a way we could do it and we should at least be talking about it and communicating it ourselves too.
Okay, so how are we concluding that discussion?
So I guess, Chris, is that something Greg can work on with?
Yes, it is. You know, he sent me a message here that says that they're working on now. If you want to help, here's how.
Yeah.
Campaign.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
The next communication is from the Education Advisory Board. This is a, this relates to what's on the agenda for tonight regarding the commitment that the city has in connection with the 12 items that the city is being asked to approve, which are park enhancements, playground enhancements at the various schools in our city. In particular, they want the full, the full allocation to Sunrise Middle School. And so that brings up, is Phil in the room? Yeah. Yeah, so that brings up a discussion that we're going to have tonight. My understanding is that if we were to, if we were to put back all the money in all the projects that had originally been suggested for the enhancement of these park spaces and playground facilities, that we would be short about a million dollars. And we're not able to take it out of the parks bond money. And it would be a decision by this commission as to whether or not to allocate that money from the general fund. So it's something we may want to think about, something we may want to discuss tonight on the agenda item. But personally, you know, I think it's a meritorious cause. I have several people who have signed up to speak on this, but before we get to them, does anyone else have any comments or do you want to wait till the people wish to speak?
Hear what people have to say.
Okay, is Amy Elwitz here? Hi, Amy.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm the chair of the Education Advisory Board. So I don't really have any words specifically to say. I just wanted to make myself available. If you had any questions to provide further context or insight into our discussion.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you, Amy. Jim, did you want to speak on this issue? Because you didn't really, it wasn't clear which issue, but I figured it was this one. James LeBrie?
James LeBrie, resident of Quinsey Heights for nearly 20 years. I just wanted to support the request that the city commission move forward with finding the funds that would include $725,000 that was removed from the Sunrise Middle School allocation in the bond. If I recall correctly, at one of the last meetings, the couple of the city commissioners volunteered to offer some of the money that was sitting in another bucket within this huge $200 million park bond. It's not clear to me why those funds can't be moved around, but if they can't, they can't. But I really hope that we can find a resolution to this as quickly as possible. And I support and ask you for your support to continue finding that money for the Sunrise Middle School. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mayor, can you clarify something? It's not a matter of finding the money. It's a matter of giving Sunrise Middle what they originally.
Yeah, what?
Can you explain it?
What happened was.
Know what happened. I'm saying, but if we give them what they initially wanted.
Right.
It creates a shortfall for the other things that we put into this bucket when we took from it.
We defunded part of it and gave it to other schools. So now we'd have to take it back, which is not going to sit well with those other places. So the question is, you know, where do we come up with the difference? And that's something we need to discuss. So we could discuss it tonight at the, you know, it's an agenda item, or we can discuss it now. What are your thoughts?
I mean, go ahead.
You have any?
I just still want to get to, A, getting Sunrise what they initially wanted. B is understanding, I know we can't touch the park improvement money. But let's say if I had some.
I believe that was attempted in the past. Mr. Ballow, do you have a comments on that?
Just to the extent that campaign, you know, that we looked into, since we are under a current injunction panhandling with the case that's pending.
Could you speak into your microphone a little bit?
Yes, sorry, I thought I was. Since we do have a pending case regarding panhandling in federal court, we are under an injunction. So we looked at that issue, but we find with regards to any proposed campaign, there wouldn't be a bar to it because of the injunction, as long as it's limited to us conveying the message that you should refrain from giving versus addressing the actual panhandling itself. So we should be fine in that regard.
Well, is that in the form of like billboards or public service announcements or?
That I don't know. I don't know what's being proposed, but it would be permissible as long as that's it's it's on that one side where we're trying to dissuade doing it in intersections and other places that may be dangerous.
Commissioner Glassman, this is in your district, although not not exclusively in your district, but the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board is. Do you have any thoughts on this? Have you been consulted on this?
No, I did read it and we discussed it briefly last night at my pre-agenda meeting, but I I mean, I guess something like this, if it's going to be a public service campaign, I would imagine that PIO would think about something or present something, or maybe we can discuss it more specifically at a conference agenda. But it seems that, I mean, a campaign is more than just, you know, a press release. So I don't, I don't know. I haven't heard much about it.
I just, I personally, I understand the reasoning behind it, but I personally think it would make the city look like, you know, we don't want to help people in need and, you know, we're discouraging people from doing that. Here we go all over again with Arnold Abbott, and I just feel, it just doesn't seem right. I mean, I, I truly do not believe we should be giving anything to people who are standing in the middle of our streets, you know, asking for assistance. But at the same time, you know, doing a public service announcement might be misinterpreted. And I don't know, does anyone have any other thoughts on that? Commissioner, do you have any thoughts on that?
Go ahead, Ben.
Oh, Ben, Vice Mayor.
Sure. This is something I encourage when I talk to folks in the community. I just encourage them, hey, we have great service providers out there and just encourage you to support those where people who are struggling with homelessness can get the resources. So that's what I try to encourage. And we had, you know, I know you all know we have some great resource guides to give out. So I think the message is a good one to share with folks of here's how to best help people. And Chris and I have actually talked about this because it's come up in our, my district periodically. Chris, didn't we, we were looking at some kind of signage? Weren't we talking about some kind of signage around these lines of how to, you know, encourage folks to direct support?
Correct. Yeah, we were talking about signs and potentially even billboards that would direct people to appropriately donate and not donate at the at the curb.
Yeah.
We did put some of those up at the intersection of US 1 and 17th Street.
That's what I thought we did.
They were promptly removed.
Yeah.
And that unfortunately seems to be the case sometimes when we try to put street signs up to that with that message on it.
Yeah.
But I'd have to, gosh, that's been some time. So right off the top of my head, I'd have to pull my notes out and see what.
Yeah. And they were removed, Mayor, I think it was. We we put up some signage to help and then, you know, some folks like broke, like broke off the signage. So again, I think the the message of here's ways to really help our our folks who are struggling is a good one. And maybe that's something PIO could kind of look into about how to share that. And maybe if it's email camp, I don't know, but yeah.
We'll pitch that to Greg. He's nodding his head and he'll take it to our to our homeless outreach group.
A possibility. And I know Commissioner Maritas want to say something too.
Well, yeah, I agree with your comments and it's something I also discuss at my meetings. And I know it's discussed at the HOA meetings when the police come. So I think there is somewhat of a campaign. It's just not maybe on the street corners where everyone's seeing it. So I do think there's a way we can message it correctly where we say, if you really want to help, do this. It can't be, don't give to panhandlers. That's just not the right message. But it has to be something like, you know, help, help the homeless by blank and don't give to panhandlers, you know, with the subtitle. So I think there's a way we could do it and we should at least be talking about it and communicating it ourselves.
Okay. So how are we, how are we concluding that discussion?
So I guess, is that, Chris, is that something Greg can work on with?
Yes, it is. You know, he sent me a message here that says that they're working on now. If you want to help, here's how.
Yeah.
Campaign.
Okay. Great.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
The next communication is from the Education Advisory Board. This is a, this relates to what's on the agenda for tonight regarding the commitment that the city has in connection with the 12 items that the city is asked, being asked to approve, which are park enhancements, playground enhancements at the various schools in our city. In particular, they want the full, the, the, the full allocation to Sunrise Middle School. And so that brings up, is Phil in the room? Yeah. Yeah. So that that brings up a discussion that we're going to have tonight. My understanding is that if we were to, if we were to put back all the money in all the projects that that had originally been suggested for the enhancement of these park spaces and playground facilities, that we would be short about a million dollars. And and we're not able to take it out of the parks bond money. And it would be a decision by this commission as to whether or not to allocate that money from the general fund. So it's something we may want to think about, something we may want to discuss tonight on the agenda item. But personally, you know, I think it's a, it's a meritorious cause. I have several people who have signed up to speak on this, but before we get to them, does anyone else have any comments? Or do you want to wait till the speak people wish to speak?
Hear what people have to say.
Okay. Is Amy Elwitz here? Hi, Amy.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm the Chair of the Education Advisory Board. So I, I don't really have any words specifically to say. I just wanted to make myself available. If you had any questions to provide further context or insight into our discussion.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you, Amy. Jim, did you want to speak on this issue? Because you didn't real, it wasn't clear which issue, but I figured it was this one. James Labrie?
James Labrie, resident of Quinsey Heights for nearly 20 years. I just wanted to support the request that the city commission move forward with finding the funds that would include $700,000, $725,000 that was removed from the Sunrise Middle School allocation in the bond. If I recall correctly, at one of the last meetings, the couple of the city commissioners volunteered to offer some of the money that was sitting in another bucket within this huge $200 million park bond. It's not clear to me why those funds can't be moved around, but if they can't, they can't. But I really hope that we can find a resolution to this as quickly as possible. And I support and ask you for your support to continue finding that money for the Sunrise Middle School. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can you clarify something? It's not a matter of finding the money. It's a matter of giving Sunrise Middle what they originally.
Yeah, what?
Can you explain it?
What happened was?
Know what happened, I'm saying, but if we give them what they initially wanted.
Right.
It creates a shortfall for the other things that we put into this bucket when we took from it.
We defunded part of it and gave it to others, other, other schools. So now we'd have to take it back, which is not going to sit well with those other places. So the question is, you know, where do we come up with the, with the difference? And that's something we need to discuss. So we can discuss it tonight at the agenda, you know, it's an agenda item, or we can discuss it now. What are your thoughts?
I mean, go ahead.
You have any?
I just still want to get to, A, getting Sunrise what initially what they wanted. B is understanding, I know we can't touch the, the park improvement money. But let's say if I had some land purchase money, can you use that money?
So I'll, is this on?
Yes.
So I would say, yes, you can. And I think we've, we've talked about that before. So what we're saying is we need over, we need about a million, $87,000 if we're going to fully fund what was on the initial bond list, as well as what came out of the recommendation from the Education Advisory Board and the Parks and Recreation Board. So we're looking over a million dollars. So as the manager and as the mayor said, we have no funds. Now they're unallocated. But there are funds available in the park, buy, purchase, land purchase money that could be reallocated. But we don't have any money that's not earmarked at this point for, for expenditures down the road.
That's the problem.
So you could either, as the mayor said, you could either pull from, from that fund if you wanted to. You could use general fund dollars if you're looking to find a million dollars to do everything that was on the list, as well as what the EAB and Parks Board recommended.
So we could wait until some of those other projects are done and maybe there might be money left over that will help shrink the deficit? That's, that's always a possibility, right, Phil?
It is a possibility. It's going to be probably a few years out before you would know that.
Is that right?
And I can tell you that with our cost estimating now with the projects that are in design, with everything going on, I hate to speak what's going to happen and when we get there, Mayor, but right now it's, everything's over. Of course, what we initially thought it was going to be.
What I was paying nine months ago, my industry construction is now costing me six times the amount of money. So if I bid it last year, this year, that cost has, has gone up that much. So I can imagine what you're dealing with because most of our stuff is just that design. Am I correct?
That's correct. But we have, like, like I said, Commissioner, we have done some cost estimating on some of the projects that are moving forward. And to your point, everything's coming in higher than expected.
Okay, yeah, we better.
Mayor?
Yes.
We did actually, Phil and I have a question. On the backup to the Education Advisory Board minutes, there is a list of the schools with the bond amount that was allocated, then the working group proposal, and then the EAB and PRBAB recommended revisions. But not all the schools are listed for some reason. I don't know why on that list. I was just trying to go through it. I know that William Dandy's there, but Dandy's, that's really should be off the list, right?
Right. We were just showing initially William Dandy was allocated funds, but again, during the working group discussions and the working group, which again, the working group was city staff as well as school board staff, went to every school, talked to the principals, looked at what the needs were. And William Dandy felt like with Oswald Park and with Bass Park and what they had there, they did not need the funds. So they were willing to give those up for, in order to, to make it useful.
So even if you take that off, though, you still are missing, on this backup to the minutes, it's, there's Sunset Park, Stranahan High, Stephen Foster Elementary, Westwood Heights Elementary, Rock Island Elementary, Thurgood Marshall, Dillard 6 through 12, Harbordale Elementary, Florinata Park, and Virginia Schuman Young Elementary. So there's, I think, well, Sunrise Middle's not on this list, right? And either is North Fork Elementary. So I'm just wondering why they're not on this list.
Okay, I'm not for sure what, I'm not sure what list you have, but.
Well, I have the, the list that was actually in the backup to the communication to the commission that came with the Education Advisory minutes of April 21, 2022. It just seems that there are some schools missing on this list.
Page 23 and 24, 22, 21.
And then Mayor, to your point, we actually, at our last discussion of this, the, the commission unanimously said, restore the funding to Sunrise Middle. But then we thought that staff was going to go back and figure out how that was going to happen. But the cam that we have tonight, and we probably should get into this tonight, but for tonight's agenda, there is no solution offered. There's no, it's the same cam as the last meeting. There's no, no proposal, no, here's how this can work.
There's no, there's no path.
There's no path offered.
Right. So if I can address that, since it was my cam that made it to the agenda tonight, you're, you are correct. It is the same cam. Since the last meeting that we all had, you sent us away to see if we could, see if we could find those dollars to be able to make everybody whole. As Phil suggested, we did in fact do that review and analysis. There are not dollars in the park bond that are not allocated. And so we come saying that we can reallocate dollars in the bond fund, but somebody's going to be a winner and a loser
Okay.
in that transaction. And so the reason that we published the same one is because if there's any of those projects that you all think are so important that they need to move forward very quickly, it would be acceptable tonight to separate some on the list or off the list so that some items could move forward. And then I need to get a sense from you all if you're supportive of using land acquisition dollars to close that gap, or if you'd rather look to me and say, Chris, go find money in the general fund to close that gap. Or you say, the gap's not going to be closed and we get that. But that's why it came in the format it came tonight.
Okay. So if I can, and maybe you all are already clear on this. Chris, when you say the gap, what's the, what's the gap you're talking?
The gap is this million dollars that we went.
Million dollars.
It's a million and change.
Everybody whole.
Right. Which is for Sunrise.
Correct, amongst others.
Amongst others.
Sunrise is the lion's share of it.
And I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right because where are you getting the million and change? What, what page are you all on or?
It's not in the backup.
Not in the backup.
It's not in the backup.
Just want to be clear. So.
We can tell you exactly what the dollar figure is.
So Phil, just give us, I just want, go ahead.
I want to see it too.
Yeah, yeah, you want to see it too? Yeah, yeah. Okay. So I just want to see.
It's being represented to us by, by Phil.
Yeah.
If you were to restore the funding at all the schools that, that were originally assigned a certain dollar.
Right.
If you add it all up, we don't have enough money to cover all of them.
Right. So we got a short change.
But if you look at the, if you look at the list that's attached, we might need to go through this together as a commission because the Education Advisory Board's done a good job of, of showing you what was approved in the bond and then what the proposals are and recommended revisions are. You could see the differentials there. But again, I think, I think we're missing North Fork Elementary and Sunrise on this list for some reason.
Okay. So just, just so we're all playing along, which, what page are you on, Commissioner Glassman?
Well, this is 20, is it 20, I don't, is it 23?
21 is what I see.
21.
I have.
What I was looking at.
There are three pages apart.
Yeah. It starts with Stranahan High on the top, Stephen Foster, Westwood Heights, Rock Island Elementary, Thurgood Marshall, Dillard 6 through 12, Harbordale, Florinata Park, Virginia Schuman Young, Sunset Park, and William Dandy. But as I said, there are some missing schools. I don't know why.
Well, let's look at some of these items like Rock Island. It was, it wasn't even on the original bond project list.
Right. And I asked Phil about this list just now and he said he's not sure what this list is.
Well, this list, according to the communication to us.
Yeah.
This list is, review of the list of the items that were removed from all projects and find additional funds. Attached is the original list with revisions noted. This came from the Education Advisory Board. Attached is the original list with revisions noted.
Okay.
Because remember, the communication in front of us is to not just make Sunrise Middle whole, but to make everybody and to, to restore all of the items that were removed. But that's why, this is a good list. The columns show you exactly what has happened throughout the process here.
Well, so let's see. Phil, can you clarify?
From what I'm learning is, I guess whatever was attached to the Education Advisory Board is, there's not, there's a page missing. My, my sheet starts with Croissant Park and then.
We don't have that in our backup.
Page one is missing.
I had a feeling something was missing.
So.
So I'm not for sure what we shared with you for, with the backup for the minutes or for this.
Backup starts with Stranahan High School.
Okay, that's my second page. So I guess you're missing.
We're missing page one. Okay.
Can we see page one on the screen possibly? So we're all looking at the same four pages?
Yeah, I have, I have that.
Or like, like a little Elmo thing.
Well, apparently there's, there's another page we don't have.
We have two, three, and four.
Yeah, we're just missing page one.
Just missing one.
And then Commissioner Glassman, what page are you seeing the definition of that list on?
Well, look on the.
Page one of 24?
No, look on the, look right away in the very communication. It is in part of the communication to the city commission underneath, underneath the attendance of the board on April 21.
Attachments.
Look in the first paragraph.
Joint Use Parks.
Attached is the original list, fourth, fourth line down in the middle. Attached is the original list.
Phil, while they're talking, can you explain something to me?
Okay, now it's.
It was represented to us that the reason why, the reason why we are over budget is because if you restore the amount of money that was promised according to the original bond project list, we're short about a million dollars. But I see some, some schools here that were never on the bond project list. And, you know, it's almost a million dollars of money that was not originally intended for those schools. Like Harbordale, 275,000 was never on the list. Thurgood, Thurgood Marshall, 400,000 was never on the list. How are we, how are we saying then that, that these schools are entitled to those allocations when they were never originally on the list?
See, I think that's how we got the unanimous decision like Commissioner Glassman was saying. Last time when we looked at the list, we realized that in an effort to make Sunrise Middle whole. And then we still tried to come back and include the others to make sure they got what they wanted. And that's where this million dollar cloud came from.
Right. So where, where, do we have the first page yet?
Yeah, it's on, well, it was on.
Can you?
I'm hitting it right on the head.
Front of you.
To address your question, how that came about, there was a little over $10 million in the initial bond for what we call school parks, which were, which were parks were on school property. So the Education Advisory Board had that discussion and said, let's relook at how best to use that $10 million. So there was a, a matrix developed. There was points given to different school, uh, levels and then, and looked at all the schools in the city. So then the, using this matrix and using staff's input, the Education Advisory Board came up with this new list on how they thought best to spend that $10 million. So that's how that changed over time. There was three schools that weren't in our 19 or 2016 master plan, which is all the, which, again, which all this came out of. Times had changed, things had changed. The EAB wanted to relook at that $10 million. They did that with staff's assistance and this is where the new list came from.
All right. See, can you move this list over? What are we, we're missing, we're missing what's on the left-hand side of the list.
Okay.
What is that, is, what does this represent?
Should be schools.
Okay. So now we have the names of the schools. So we have Croissant Park, Lauderdale Manners, North Fork School Park. Where's Sunrise?
Or North Fork Elementary. Oh, they're on the bottom.
So manners, I don't see Sunrise though. Who's Sunrise Middle?
Is there a longer list? Is Walker? I mean, this is really not, why don't we just do this tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's get our, let's get our stuff, yeah, let's do this tonight. We're not, we don't, this is not any way to do business here. So can we just, I'll tell you what, can you just make a copy of this sheet so the commissioner, commission can have it for tonight? And we can discuss it tonight. All right?
It makes it all of its included.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just make sure that everybody gets this one, which again, is the first page.
Okay, Commissioner Maritas, you, can you?
I'm okay, but I just want to give my opinion because I gave it two weeks ago and I'll give it, give it tonight again. I still believe that we need to 100% fund everything that voters voted on because it was in the backup. I just think there's zero negotiations.
Well, but that would leave out some schools.
Well, then we deal with that later, but we have to 100% fund everything voters voted on.
Well, I don't, I, I don't disagree with you. I, I, that's why I want to see what we voted on. That's why we need every pay here.
So then what we're discussing is the extra million and where that's going to come from. So if we have it, we can find it. We want to transfer funds from one of your districts. That's great. So that's really where we are.
Okay. All right.
We can transfer it from one of your districts.
I know. And let me tell you about my district. My district has.
Hey, listen.
60 acres of park space. District two has 209 acres. District three has 268 acres. District four has 180 acres. District one has the least amount of park space. District one does not have any more funds to transfer.
In one breath, you say one thing and then you talk about what the voters voted for. They voted for this money.
I just, I.
Just the way it was.
I'm just saying I don't have it in my district.
Either feed what needs to be fed and what isn't fed, if it's not worth allocating at, is, it doesn't happen unless one of us say, hey, look, we want to give up our acquisition dollars.
Right.
Most of you have already spent your acquisition dollars. So you just can't say I want the lion's share and, 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 and I want the voters to be made whole. You got to be willing to sacrifice some things. Sunrise Middle, in my opinion, got the raw end of this deal.
I think so too.
Phil, was Croissant Park, Lauderdale Manners Park, North Fork, were they, were they in the original bonds, bond for funding?
Yes, they were.
All four, all three of those?
North Fork.
Lauderdale Manners.
Yes. Croissant Park. Yes, and Croissant, yes.
Okay, so then according to.
Croissant Park.
So whatever. So according to my math, four schools here that are getting funded were not part of the original bond.
Which four of those?
Commissioner Maritas.
Yeah, that, but can we, let's just, let's, let's.
I want to hear the four.
The four?
Correct.
Yeah.
Rock Island Elementary, Thurgood Marshall, Dillard 6 through 12, and Harbordale Elementary. Those four.
Were not part of the original.
They were not part of the bond.
Okay.
Voters did not vote on those four.
That's almost a million dollars right there.
We got it. We just answered it.
All right. But we'll discuss that tonight when we have a full deck.
Just wanted to give you that.
Right now, we only, we, we got half a deck here.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
All right. Let's move on to business one. This is roadway elevation, a community resilience conversation. Dr. Nancy Gassman is here to deliver the presentation. Good afternoon, Doctor.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners.
How do we raise roads without flooding everybody?
That is the question.
Is that the $64,000 question?
Thank you, and that's the end of my presentation.
Yes.
So this afternoon, we're, we're going to be discussing part of what you've already identified as a commission top priority, and that is the resilience of our community to the very many aspects of climate change and other things that threaten the community. And we're, we're at a very important part of our journey into addressing climate change. And that is that we are about to transition from the point between our short-term solutions and some of the future adaptation strategies that we need to start consider, considering. And these policy decisions moving forward will be some of the most important that any commission will make for the community. And it's going to have fiscal implications for both the public and private sectors of our community.
What are we looking at now? What is that image of?
That image is a panoramic of the intersection of Isla Capri and Mola during a particularly high tide.
Where is it again?
Isla Capri and Mola Avenue.
Isla Capri and Mola, okay. Looks pretty wet.
It's pretty wet.
Ground zero.
Okay. So today, what we're going to be going through is, is intending to really initiate a policy discussion considering some of our long-term approaches to determining city investments and climate adaptation strategies, including roadway elevation. And today, we're going to review some of our tidal inundation information, provide some policy context on roadway elevation. And then the last slides in the presentation will pose some basic questions to consider when developing that policy and proposing some next steps. When you look at the history of tidal flooding in our community, what you see there is that in 2018, we had 46 high tides that, that exceeded the threshold for flooding in our community of 1.3 feet N A V D. In 2019, that number jumped to 170 high tides, keeping in mind, of course, that we have two high tides per year, per day. In 2020, 2021, and 22, those numbers have started to come down. But what I'd like to point out is that in 2022, we are not yet to king tide season, which usually starts in about August. And through the end of April, we've had 21 tides that have exceeded the threshold for flooding already. So king tide season is starting to shift and we're starting to see that sea level rise is causing us to have these high tides that are happening almost any time of year now, not just in the fall. not just in the fall. Each year, as our stormwater operations team gets ready for king tide flooding, we look at the previous year's record of observations and complaints regarding tidal flooding. And so the map in front of you right now is showing you where those areas were during the 2021 king tide season. These are based on the 2020 reports. And you can see that in the main areas that are impacted are primarily in District two and four, and some of the southern area in District one. So there's a number of things that we're doing currently to address those concerns with roadway inundation. One of the first things that the city tried, and has been fairly successful with, to reduce tidal access to the roadways through our stormwater system. And in order to do that, we've installed over 185 tidal valves. We expect to install another 200 over the course of the next five years. And we've also been lining and replacing damaged outfall pipes, because under, under previous conditions, those outfall pipes didn't have to be watertight. But now they have to be watertight in order for the tidal valves to work effectively. The, another thing that we've been doing is trying to create barriers to tidal flow entering our roadways. And one of the ways that we've been doing that is by elevating both public and private seawalls to reduce that access for that tidal flow. And then the final action that we've been taking is to remove the water from the roadways. And we've done that sometimes with temporary pumps, but moving forward, we have a number of permanent large pump stations planned as part of the stormwater master planning process.
Has, did that, did that work on Isle of Palm?
Yes, the, the picture that you're looking at there
Yeah.
was at, during the highest high tide in 2020, and you can see that the roadway is completely dry.
Okay, good, good.
So then we get into what we're doing now versus what we need to do for future strategies. And one of those future strategies is potentially to elevate roadways above sea level. And as you know, sea level is rising. One of the challenges of elevating a roadway is that you're prioritizing protection of the roadway over protection of the private properties. Because as you lift the roadways, you're going to drive more of that stormwater toward those private properties. And there are also a number of other options in terms of both policy and planning to start the conversation about what are the appropriate strategies for what part of the city? And whether that means to start the conversation about managed retreat, a word that I have been very reticent to use in public settings to date, change development requirements for roadways, discuss roadway elevation in the context of potential private property elevation, requiring new developments to prepare for harmonization with elevated roads. And there are many other possibilities, again, as part of this start of our conversation. Normally, you're used to looking at the sea level, sea level rise projection, showing you how much sea level is going to rise from the 2000 baseline. This projection is actually showing you what the topographic elevation of sea level will be moving forward. And what's important to note here is that, number one, it's a curve, it's not a line, which means that sea level rise is accelerating, so we would have to plan for more and more elevation over time. Essentially, what that means is that the amount of rise we're going to see in this decade is less than the amount of rise that we're going to see in the next decade and the next decade. Currently, as the city does its planning for major infrastructure, we look at 2.5 feet of elevation as our minimum for planning purposes for infrastructure that we expect to last for the next 50 years. Some of the roadways in the city would have to be elevated by more than 18 inches to meet that particular standard. And of course, there's always the challenge of how do you fund it, recognizing that in most of our new projects that we add to the community investment plan, we add them at the end of the five years, since most of the projects in the current year have been waiting five years to be built. So in the graphic on your left, what you'll notice is that it is a roadway network, and you'll notice that some of the roadways have some color to them. And any of those roadways that are showing that color are roadways that are below that 2.5 feet of elevation for the 2070 projection for 50-year infrastructure. One of the challenges as we start talking through this issue is that when you look at the minimum and maximum monthly high tides in 2020, for example, you'll notice that one of the highest tides that we experienced was 2.6 feet, 2.59 feet. So even though the expectation is that median sea level rise by 2070 will be at 2.5 feet, we are currently experiencing, not frequently, but on occasion, over 2.5 feet in terms of high tides. So I'm going to jump out of the presentation right now and show you a quick video.
Before you do that, I mean, so the street gets flooded on those.
Over the best way to combat sea level rise, Miami Beach has been a pioneer when it comes to raising roads to keep streets from flooding.
No, I was just going to ask you, um, so the, the road gets wet for that one occasion, but the water goes away, right? So how long, how long does it go away? How deep is it? Does it really, you know, damage that much? I mean, it's just water, and I know water can be very damaging and very threatening, but it's also, it's just an inconvenience. So how much of it is, you know, a threat and how much of it is just an inconvenience for us to be considering tens of millions of dollars' worth of investment? You know what I'm saying? There's a, there's a, you know, point of diminishing returns here that we have to consider.
Absolutely, and that's one of those, those issues that needs to be discussed is, is different roads are at different elevations.
Right.
Different amount of investment is needed for a, each different road in order to bring it up to, for example, sea level rise elevation for the year 2070. And so that is part of the conversation. How do you prioritize roadways? And we'll, I'll cover some of that a little bit later in the presentation, but you're absolutely right. This is not, there's not a one-size-fits-all solution, and there are certainly locations where, from an engineering standpoint, it's not possible to elevate the roadways. And you also have to consider the community benefit versus the individual property benefit for certain roadways.
Okay, so let's see your Channel 10 investigative report.
Over the best way to combat sea level rise, Miami Beach has been a pioneer when it comes to raising roads to keep streets from flooding.
But the next phase of work is now causing a bit of controversy, as local tenant investigator Amy Vitary shows us. Some residents worry protecting streets put their private properties at a greater risk.
It's like the ocean over here.
You don't have to be a scientist to know, we got to do this. We just have to do it in a way that respects the, the property owners.
To raise or not to raise the street levels is once again at the center of controversy in Miami Beach in the next phase of stormwater projects. Focused on a portion of West Avenue, Bay Road, and Western Lincoln Road, the project now set to move forward after being stalled over four years.
We don't feel comfortable. We still don't have a finalized plan with what's going to happen with parking, loading zone, bike lane, green space.
The project aims to address flooding from sea level rise and aging infrastructure. But business owner Stephane Genes and neighbors are worried over plans to remove hundreds of parking spaces and raise roads by as much as two feet, increasing the risk, they say, of flooding on their properties.
As you can see, our garage goes down.
The garage at Valerie Navarette's older building already sits well below street level, and it already floods badly.
The water was up to here. We lost all the cars, all the motorcycles.
She worries raising roads anywhere near this property will make the problem even worse.
We cannot raise in front of my building, because the, we wouldn't be able to get in.
Neighbors point to previous projects like Palm and Hibiscus Islands, where raising the roads left multimillion-dollar homes well below street level. A majority of residents have refused to sign so-called harmonization agreements, which would release the city from damages or liability resulting from the work.
Absolutely red flags. I mean, we're, it doesn't seem like that the city is learning from a lot of the mistakes they made.
Neighbors' concerns may be valid, according to Eris Papadopoulos, who heads a resilience nonprofit and serves as resilience expert at FIU. In this letter to city officials, he warns data shows current rain level assumptions are inaccurate, writing, "Are residents correct to fear properties could likely flood after these projects? If rain conditions exceed the low design levels, I'm afraid yes."
We're getting what they call, you know, 100-year events, 500-year events, you know? So we need to know what happens in those situations. It's important not just to keep the roads dry, but let's try to keep the properties dry, you know? Because I like to say that the value of Miami Beach is not in its roads, it's in its properties.
In recent weeks, the city commission narrowly voted down a proposal to limit the raising of roads to just three inches, sparking debate about how to move the project forward.
We don't act on these things. I'm convinced there will be a day when insure, when an insurer is going to say, I won't insure your property, when a, a, a bank will say, I will not accept a loan or you're in default if we don't take action now.
Mayor Dan Gelber points to areas like Sunset Harbor, where the city says raising roads along with installing pumps has prevented dozens of flooding events. People living near West Avenue, though, say every neighborhood is different, with different needs.
I'm convinced that our administration, our manager, and our team can figure out how to, how to do these harmonizations, even if it costs us a little bit more money. We should, we should try to make sure we're, we're taking care of them.
Amy Vitary, Local 10 News.
The city's office of the inspector general is currently reviewing the West Avenue Stormwater Project. Their report and findings are expected to be presented in May.
Okay, Louie O'Gary. Does that conclude your report?
It does not.
Okay.
As, as you've seen from this particular investigative report, that elevating roadways is controversial, it's expensive, and it has legal and fiscal consequences for both public and private entities. The city of Miami Beach has been sued or has pending liability, litigation related to flooding on private properties. Properties are differentially impacted depending on their finished floor elevations. In some situations, elevating the road can increase property values, increase insurability, and preserve that property for the next mortgage cycle. But the cost of raising one roadway segment and the associated utilities in the city of Fort Lauderdale would currently exceed the city's annual budget for roadway maintenance and repair. The additional costs for harmonization and potential acquisition of private properties are also possible. And it, again, may generate this planning that we've been talking about for the potential for managed retreat. When you look at a property, and our engineering group has developed this graphic, what you need to understand is this particular example is showing elevating a roadway from one foot to two feet, so a 12-inch difference. And you get to start to have a sense of what the harmonization requirements are starting to be. The driveway in the front yard would have to be harmonized with that new elevation of the roadway. Trees do not like it when you add soil around their base, so trees would either have to be removed or adjustments would have to be made so that they don't end up having more soil around their base than they currently have. The crown of the road in this particular situation would be above the finished floor of the dwelling. And if the finished floor is above the, of, above the finished floor, if the roadway is above the finished floor, stormwater will run off and into the home. So the act of the city raising the road creates liability for the city of flooding for that property. And that's when we start to get into conversations about having to buy out these homes if we're going to elevate those roadways. In this specific situation, the owner was approached and asked, and they offered the city to buy the property for 6.7 times the amount of the current just property value on the property appraisers list. So if you don't have willing sellers, how do you deal with consensus about raising a road? And I don't want to gloss over the fact that when you raise the road, all of our utilities are under the road, so you have to make the adjustments for water and sewer utilities as well as stormwater utilities. And at least in Miami Beach, they ended up installing a number of stormwater pumps on private property in order to keep that, those properties dry. And if that pump fails, again, that creates liability for the city. And this would be, again, you're creating improvements on private property with public funds. So there's a number of questions that I've put here for your consideration as you start this conversation. Is the roadway elevation at all locations really feasible from an engineering standpoint? What underground utilities may be impacted? Should the city set a standard minimum elevation for roadways? Or perhaps different types of roadways should be elevated at different levels? What expectation will we be setting once we have created the first road elevation project? Will road elevation require property owner consensus? When you have properties on that roadway that are below the crown of the road and would be even further below the crown of the road, should we elevate it? Is the city willing to use public dollars to purchase private property to achieve elevation in a given roadway area? Who pays for all or part of the roadway elevation? Do you do a special assessment? Do you use general funds? Who pays for the cost of harmonization? Because that's the private property side of road elevation. Once the city starts raising roadways, will there be adequate funding and time, given accelerating sea level rise, to raise all of the vulnerable roadways? What are the legal liabilities the city will create by elevating the roads? What community benefit does raising any given roadway provide? And that last question, how do you prioritize roadways for elevation using public funds? There's a number of ways to consider it, and Miami Beach has used a number of these methods in their plan, by using, for example, roadway elevation. Emergency routes should be raised higher than collector roads versus residential roadways. Do you consider those that are most vulnerable to flooding first? Or do you try to invest in roadways that are fairly resilient now in order to maintain that resiliency through time? Do you consider the number of properties that are going to be benefiting from that elevation? Do you consider the property value over the number of properties in order to determine which road should be prioritized? Do you consider who is going to be willing to pay for, to be assessed for roadway elevation or to be assessed for that harmonization? There's a number of things that you could consider as you're moving forward. And so in terms of next steps on the staff side, we're going to continue to look at some of, we're, we're going to be doing a vulnerability analysis that we're currently awaiting some funding from the state, which will include roadway elevation information. We'll continue to research activities by other jurisdictions. And of course, not only do we want to start, but to continue this conversation. And with that, Mayor, that is my last slide.
Okay, thank you so much. We have two people who've signed up to speak. Alec Bogdanoff and Ray Thrower. Alec, you want to come up?
Mayor Commissioners, I'm Alec Bogdanoff. I'm a resident and business owner in Fort Lauderdale. I've been working on Mola Avenue in a variety of avenues for five years now, but this is what I do for a living, working on resilience issues. I don't want to understate the importance of this policy decision. This is probably one of the most expensive decisions you'll ever make as a commission, starting to really understand what it's going to cost to address sea level rise as a community. What I would say is doing nothing is not an option. If people cannot get to their properties, those properties will not have the value they do now. We need to start thinking about this from a business case and not just from nuisance or a life safety issue, but what is the value of property that we're preserving, which is basically the revenue for the city to continue its operations? And a lot of our most vulnerable streets are our most valuable streets. This is a really challenging conversation. It's not going to be an easy one. The good news is, Fort Lauderdale has been a leader in resilience and taking innovative approaches. They did this with tidal flex valves, with backflow preventers way back when, when people weren't even thinking about it, working with residents. I would encourage you all to continue to work with the residents who have been putting years of their lives into their community and trying to figure out how to raise their roads. So, you know, it's not going to be an easy conversation, it's not going to be a cheap conversation, but the reality is, we can either start thinking about what we do as a community and be proactive, or we can wait for other people to tell us what we have to do. And that's not a good situation to be in.
Well, Alec, you said you've been working on Mola Drive for five years, so have you reached a point where you feel there may be a solution?
I think there's definitely a short-term solution and a long-term solution, as Dr. Gassman pointed out. One of the, the policy decisions you all have to make is, let's say you have 20 residents, and one of them doesn't want to cooperate with the road raising project, how do you handle that from a policy standpoint? That is a policy decision which needs to be made. And there are there. be made. And are there engineering solutions? Yes. You know, you guys have tremendous city staff who have a lot of experience in flooding stormwater and sea level rise issues. But I think the commission needs to be able to provide direction to staff to say, yes, this is something that's okay, or we need to come up with a solution that you all are...
So you feel there is a solution for Mola Drive?
There is some solution to Mola Drive. Is there a permanent solution that's going to fix all flooding problems? Absolutely not. But I will tell you, there have already been some solutions that have been implemented. You know, there was a section of seawall that had a very low seawall. That area was filled in, so it stopped a lot of the really bad flooding. I think a lot of your staff know Mola Avenue, you know, inch by inch at this point. But there is some solution. Am I, you know, I don't want to start talking about specific solutions and what that ends up being, but there is some solution.
Okay, thank you. Is Ray Thrower still here? I didn't see him. No. Okay. Sorry, Ray. Okay. Anyone on the commission have any questions of Dr. Gassman?
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Dr. Gassman, thank you. This is well thought out. I really appreciate it, alerting us to what's coming ahead. So are you saying kind of what we're doing currently with the seawalls and the tidal valves, it's more of a temporary solution and we need to think long-term? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the seawall work that we're doing, we are elevating the seawalls to five feet of elevation, which should provide protection for those areas where we have raised the seawall for a good 50 years. So I don't view the seawall elevation as a temporary solution. The tidal valves are a little more on the temporary nature for those areas that are especially low-lying.
Okay. So I guess where the roads would need to be elevated, those are not maybe parallel to an area that we could just raise the seawall? Or maybe, I'm thinking, do we just need to do more seawall raising, or do we need to focus more on the road raising? Which one should we, or both?
So we have 165 miles of waterway throughout the city of Fort Lauderdale, and only five miles of those waterways are seawalls that are owned by the city. So the city is currently aggressively addressing seawalls, especially for those seawalls that are adjacent to critical roadways. So over the course of the next year or so, we'll be raising two seawalls on Hendrix. I think it's three on La Solis and a few others in the aisles that are city-owned. But the rest of the seawalls are owned by private entities.
That's a good point. I remember that fight right before I was elected, where the commission was discussing raising, making everyone raise seawalls, and all the neighbors got upset. So are you saying that's possibly a policy decision also that could help this problem?
Well, there's really two answers to that. As you've correctly noted, initially, when we were moving forward with the, what we call the seawall ordinance a while back, the initial ordinance said it was mandated that everybody had to raise their seawall by 2035. That did not find either the community's support or political will to move forward. However, before you, probably in the July or August timeframe, will be the next iteration of the seawall ordinance. We are mandated by Broward County to change what our limits are for the minimum elevation for seawalls up to five feet, which is what we're currently building city seawalls to. So as that moves forward, all new seawalls will have to be elevated to a new minimum elevation, which will provide that protection.
Right. I remember the new seawalls have to be elevated. So you think that's part of the policy? Well, I guess Broward County already voted on it. So that will help. Title valves, I know that has helped. So this is a long-term, bigger-picture issue that we do need to tackle. I appreciate it. And I know property insurance is a huge issue for the state of Florida now, too. So when we raise the roads, how do we protect the homes? You know, obviously, that has to, that conversation needs to happen. We do have areas in our city that are not next to the water, that are still flooding. So do we have a comprehensive plan for the main areas that are experiencing, you know, water or flooding?
Right. So in 2018, the city released the Stormwater Master Plan. That was those original designs for our seven most...
Our seven, okay, got it.
However, part of that process was to develop a citywide model. And that model is telling us and informing us, using those future conditions that we've been talking about in terms of more extreme rainfall and higher sea level rise stands, that model takes that into consideration. And then in the next couple of years, we will be doing the next set of design for the next seven neighborhoods. And the number seven is coincidental. It's not...
Right, right. Okay, yes. Thank you for reminding me about that. I do have one area that is flooding, the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport next to Enter Miami. And I know we've been working on it. It may not be a part of that 2018 study, because it was kind of a new development. But I just want to make sure we're addressing that also.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Public Works Director Dodd to come up and answer that question.
Okay, so thank you. I'll pay attention to the 2018 study that you did. And District One will be worked on eventually, because we're probably the highest and the driest. But then we have FXC. Where are we with that, Alan? I know we've had a couple of studies out there.
Alan Dodd, Public Works Director. That road is not actually a public road, but is part of the airport properties. We've been working with the airport to have a consultant look at it and provide some recommendations for infrastructure improvements that will help to address the problems.
I think the problem was the public, was the public swale. If we could dig up that swale, we could alleviate the road flooding. Is that, was that my understanding?
That will be part of it, because the swell helps to capture the water. We have to move that water somewhere. And so that's part of what the analysis is looking at right now.
Okay. How long does that analysis take? I know we were working on that a while ago, maybe like a year ago.
I do not know. I'd have to get some dates from the project manager. I'm not sure when...
Okay, thank you. Sorry for springing that on you. I'm just thinking of flooding as you're talking about. Okay. So thank you, Alan, Dr. Gassman. I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Okay.
Alan, while you're there, and also Dr. Gassman, so are we waiting now to get that information or find out about the study for the vulnerability analysis, including those roadway elevations, before we begin a next step? Are we waiting to put that information together? Is that our immediate next step?
That's, from a staff level, that's our next step, unless we get other direction. The roadway elevation, when you look at Miami Beach, who has done quite a bit of work on this, they hired consultants to do an intense study of roadway elevation and to not only recommend criteria upon which to set those priorities, but also help develop some of the engineering guidance for standards to be set for different types of roadways. And that's another possibility as well, pending funding for that type of a study.
Are we considering any specific pilots, where maybe we do something a little bit different here, a little bit different there, but just perhaps some pilot projects that might find the right path for us?
We don't have anything in the CIP at this time that would relate to specifically a pilot. But again, one of the challenges that we're going to have with even a pilot-type segment is the cost, when you compare it to our current funding for roadway repair and replacement. You know, our current budget for roadway repair and replacement is $1.5 million. And the early estimates for Mola were somewhere between $3.5 and $20 million for a roadway that is .16 miles long.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to address, I'm of the opinion of what the mayor said, for this king-tide inconvenience, and then the capital layout investment, and then having to possibly purchase private property with public money. And as in that one indicator, they wanted six times the amount of the market value of the home. But I know Mr. Bogdanoff used Mola as an example, and Alan and Dr. Gassman, we have a little history there with our friend Dr. Galuso and that little tip point. And from the time we've been, this picture is great. From the time we've been pumping there the last couple of years, has that helped alleviate water as compared to what it used to be like?
So specifically at Mola, we have taken a number of activities to try to address the concerns. We've, the city had a city-owned seawall there. We elevated that.
I remember that.
The city had some code enforcement action against a specific resident. They have attempted to address the concern with their seawall.
I remember that.
We also identified that a member of the community had a sump pump that they were pumping directly into the roadway, and they needed to pump more when there was a higher tide. So they were contributing to the flooding as well. And that pump discharge has been moved to another direction. And then there was another seawall that was more than 12 inches below the, one of the large seawalls, and that has been filled in. So as we have been chipping away at these various issues, the flooding there has been reduced in frequency and intensity.
With the pumping we've been doing the last few years, has it helped?
So we have, we have only deployed temporary pumps at the location...
Has it helped, is what I'm asking?
It only, it only helps up to a certain elevation. And then once the ocean tide exceeds that elevation, we are pumping in a circular manner.
Okay.
So it's only for...
But it helped?
It can help, yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna leave this. I'm gonna go back to something that Commissioner Moritas spoke about. And it's something I've been talking about, Mayor, for probably eight years. We have an improved neighborhood, and we come in and we build new homes. We build a new structure. There are certain FEMA elevations that we have to hit. And I think back during the last commission and city manager, we did something, where we tinkered with the elevations. Now Anthony, you probably want to start walking to the microphone. And we started asking folks who were doing improvements, say in addition to your home, let's say we wanted to close in a garage on your street, Ben, one of the smaller homes. That home would have to go to an elevation in that garage, almost three or four feet from the existing floor elevation. And then they have to put stairs to go back down to the other house because of this benchmark we set. And I've always argued against the benchmark. And I was told that we couldn't do it because it was a savings with insurance and stuff. But we created, and we also created a department within your department to manage the flood. And if you go back to what Commissioner Moritas is talking about over at the airport, when we built Lockhart, we got the flooding at the airport that we didn't have before we improved that new structure at a different elevation and started sending water in different directions that ended up at the airport roofers, which we brought to your attention a while back. But that new improvement created that. And maybe we need to look at all of these possibilities there. When we look at this, because when it rains in this city, when it really, really rains, we have some serious flooding that's even more detrimental than King Tide. So I'm building a house at 2035 Intracoastal Drive right now. And...
Which is a low neighborhood.
Which is interesting. When the neighbors start coming out, talking to you about what you're doing.
Right.
They're saying, when they first moved there, they didn't have that water. But when you look at all of the houses that are built to the east, along the intercoastal, they're all up very...
They're higher.
High with our new benchmark elevations of what we set the new floor elevation for. So when it rains now, the water from that street, your district, it's all coming to that low area that was low 15 years ago, but low in comparison to your neighbor. Now these new mansions are coming in, and you're up 7.5 over your neighbor. And then when it rains, it's like a, there's a mountain over here just shooting water down the street. And as Nancy, Dr. Gassman, said, our infrastructure is already there underground, and it can't facilitate that. So I think when it comes to infill housing, or infill, when there's an improved neighborhood and we're going to build something, these new elevations are creating some drainage issues. And correct me if I'm wrong, or help me understand, you know, how we could do this. I know that was a thing that you told me the other day, that we're going to revisit all that stuff. And, because we do, we have acknowledged that this is an issue. And I think this is a bigger issue than King Tides. Because King Tides only occur in certain areas, streets, or roads. It's an issue. I'm not dismissing it, but...
Drainage is a big issue.
We got a big issue with drains, because we're doing all this improving at these different elevations, and we're sending water. Look at Walmart, for example. There's a big wasted space. There's a lot of these big shopping cities, wasted space, green space. But that's the area we want to run the water off into, and, you know, when that day occurs. But how did we get here? And is there something we can do in those areas to prevent, the two examples I gave in District One, the one I gave in Ford, we can find these all over the city. And it's great how they started with Mola, because this was an issue. And I think once we started working on the seawalls, as she indicated, and then the last thing we did was pumping and possibly using this little point here to put some type of infrastructure in. And I'm not advocating for that. I'm just saying, they didn't have the water the last couple of years like they had in the past. So Anthony, can you help me and help us all understand what it is I'm trying to paint a picture of?
Yes, Commissioner. Anthony Fajardo, City of Fort Lauderdale Development Services. So what you're referring to, the actions that we took to amend our code, were in response to FEMA changing the elevation requirements in different parts of the city, because the maps do change over time based on new data. So what we did was, we put in new standards to try and keep our CRS points, our Community Rating System points, through the insurance rebate program, lower. One of the things we did, directly relates to what you're talking about, was how we address fill. Fill can be still placed on a site that's supposed to be only used for moderate grading. But what's happening is, the water that's flowing over the land, as it traditionally was over time, is being displaced by this fill because it's raising these sites up. So there are different ways we can address that. We are looking at it now. We definitely don't want to do this in a vacuum. So our engineering team at DSD is working with Dr. Gassman's team and Public Works to kind of meld these two together and make sure that we don't create one problem by solving another. But one of the things we are looking at and will be bringing to the city commission at some point for your consideration or guidance on, is how we address fill at all. Because one of the ways to address it is to have a house on piles, or have frangible walls with flood vents to allow the water to go through, so that water is then not displaced onto neighboring properties. Property owners, when they develop a site, they do have to retain a certain amount of water, a certain amount of stormwater on site. But that doesn't account for these large events that you're talking about, that we are having more and more frequently. So in neighborhoods that don't have infrastructure in place, or have inadequate infrastructure to deal with the water that's draining, it's exacerbating the problem. And so we are currently looking at, and you're correct, we did establish a floodplain review and inspection team to make sure that everything that comes through our department is meeting all the FEMA floodplain requirements. It's raised to the current level, so the floodplain certificates are issued correctly. And then when we're audited, we can answer to FEMA for those questions. We're actually going through a review now. We anticipate that it's going to take some time to address this fully, because there are different things to look at in terms of what this change might affect over here. And then what the development community is probably going to push back on, which is, when you talk about elevating the house, that means you have staircases that go up to the front door. That means you have, you know, other areas that are going to be lower. What do we do with the pool decks? What do we do with the amenity decks, those types of things on private property? So it's a complicated question that's going to take staff some time to really unwind and come up with a recommendation.
You see it now. You could use Mola. You go down Mola, those houses towards the inlet there. I mean, it's like driving up a mountain to get in your driveway. Imagine if you've got a senior citizen mother living with you, and you go up there. There's no way. I mean, she can come around the back of the car and get in the house based on these elevations that we, like you said, arbitrarily set because of FEMA standards. But we never really looked at the real-life impact. And I think now we're experiencing it more so. And it's very difficult. And that water's coming down from those homes, and it's not being retained. It's being retained at the time of the inspection. But when these heavy rains come and the neighbors start calling us, it's a result of what we did, in my opinion. And I'm on the other end, too. I've always argued against it. But when you told me the other day you're going to be addressing this, I mean, I was just so elated. But I wonder, you know, what damage is already done out there, especially somebody that... Uh, especially in somebody that, the, uh, the, um, more expensive neighborhoods where they, they come in and put these mega mansions in and these houses are way up there. So how soon?
I don't really have a timeline for you right now. Uh, staff has been meeting on a regular basis. We meet bi-weekly. Um, engineers, the engineers are trying to put together some models so that we can see what's gonna happen. Some of it's pretty complicated to do.
Oh.
Uh, we, we may have to see what our resources are and what we can apply with what we have or see what we need to procure to get it completed.
Good thing you renovated and not added on mayor. You'd be in trouble if you had demolished it.
You know, why don't we do what they do in France? You know, at Mont Saint Michelle, you know, the flooding occurs at once a day, twice a day sometimes, and they make it a tourist attraction. So here we consider it a crisis. Let's flip that a little bit. Maybe we can actually, you know, benefit. Anyway, just kidding.
Just say this a big enough.
We'll add that to our research.
For, just another question on next step. So the citywide vulnerability analysis, including roadway elevation. So that's one of the next steps we could take, right? If.
Yeah, we've applied for grant funding from the state to that Ford. And we've, we're through the second or third step of getting that funding.
Okay, great. What's a timeline estimation for that?
12, 12 to 18 months.
12 to 18 months from now. Okay, great. And then would that be concurrent? We would do, I'm just looking at your next steps, research actions to see what other jurisdictions are doing concurrently, same time? Continue the conversation. Okay. So mayor, I think we're all, or we have consensus to move forward. Do you need anything else from us or Alan or Chris?
Move forward with.
Just move forward with their next steps, the city.
Well, what are next steps?
City, yeah, that's what I just, so their next steps.
They're gonna come to us with proposals and we'll deal with them on a case by case basis, correct?
Well, I think the question becomes if you want to have additional policy conversations or whether you want staff to bring some sort of proposal for criteria to you at some point in the future for you to start, um, using as a, uh, a straw, a straw dog for you to figure out how you want to move forward from policy.
All right, so, well, this is, this is what has to happen. First, we have to figure out a solution. We, we've identified the problem. We, we, we now all agree on the problem. So we have to identify the solution, but the solutions are different. Is it a wall? Is it raising, uh, is it raising a site? Is it improving drainage? Is, what's, what's the solution? Then comes the funding for the solution. How do we fund it? Do we fund the, the property owners? Do we, is it come from CIP? Does it come from, you know, federal grants? You know, how are we gonna fund it? Okay? And then finally, how do we implement the, the program? How do we get buy-in from all the affected property owners? Okay? So there's a multi-step process here, but we need you to make the first step, which is what is the solution? And then we could go from there.
Okay.
I think that's gonna have to be the analysis.
Great. So the conducting a citywide vulnerability analysis, including roadway elevations is, is part of that, right?
Correct.
Okay, great. This one. So Chris, is that, we all good in terms of where we're heading? Just wanna make sure.
I'm okay if I look at our folks that are experts and make sure that they're okay.
Got, okay.
And head shaking in the right direction.
Perfect.
All right. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Thank you, folks. Okay, there's no one else who has signed up. Um, uh, I'm gonna hand the gavel over to the vice mayor. I gotta run up for that phone call now. And, uh, uh, I should be back shortly. So, um, please make sure I get to go through my reports. I did a lot.
Well, we'll save the best for last, Mayor.
Mayor, how long is your call? Cause I do want you to be part of the conversation for my district.
Are we, I have like five more minutes if you want to start. Why don't you start?
Let me start? Okay.
Why don't you start?
I just want to start with Lockhart. I'm so, um, excited that they finally got their vote in Miami. So congratulations. I know our original proposal was, uh, they're building their main stadium in Miami. We're the training facility. So we're excited that we finally get to see that come to fruition. Uh, that thing being said, I think we need to understand as a commission what we want to do on the 20 acres and.
Well, I agree with you. It's time to refocus on that. And, uh, um, I know there have been a lot of ideas. I hear they still are, are looking to us to perhaps cite a women's soccer, um, group. But I don't know whether they, that incorporates the 20 acres or whether that's just gonna be in the main soccer stadium, especially, uh, since the, the MLS team, you know, may be migrating, uh, to the south, whenever that could happen. But, um, but we've talked about activating that 20 acres with perhaps a skate park with, uh, you know, I do think that there needs to be a passive park area there.
No, it's definitely gonna be passive. What we decide to do on the 20 acres, we can certainly finish that conversation. But I think we need to make the decision that the city will continue to use that 20 acres for a hundred percent, you know, city of Fort Lauderdale needs. And if whatever they want to do on their side.
I'm with you a hundred percent.
Whether it's women's soccer, they have beautiful six fields they can use. I'd love to see women's soccer come and they'll have, you know, more opportunities on their 40 acre side. You know, we only have 20.
I think we're in agreement with that, right?
But I think that we need to do this smartly so that, I mean, I think the city manager needs to make a present. I think we need to schedule this for a conference meeting, agenda item, and thoroughly vet all of the possibilities, where we want to go, where we think they want to go. But we need to have it as an agenda.
But I think we need to give the city manager some time to meet with them so that they can come back to us with, with, uh, one or two or perhaps three recommendations and how to, uh, how to imagine that 20 acres. So can we give you like 60 days? Is that, is that enough time to interact with them?
How about 30? Cause they've already talked about it for three years.
How much time do you need?
We can, we can be ready a month from now. Be ready the first meeting in June.
First meeting in June?
June 7th.
Great.
Okay.
June 7th.
And so I think we, we really need to decide. And if you all decide to do something else, you know, so be it.
No, no, we, but I, but we, we didn't ignore it and we didn't forget it. We just, it was, but now we need to act on it. So, so the city manager says, give him, uh, till the first meeting of June and he'll have a presentation for us.
Right. And I, I would like us to consider, I mean, you can certainly consider whatever they want to bring, but I'd still like us to consider what all of District One wants, which is a city park. So I hope that's still, um, the priority and, and not considering any additional alternatives except.
Well, that would be, that would be the opportunity for the public to come out and comment on that and see, you know, what they would like to see. So that would be an agenda item that they could.
So let's see all options and let's, um, now that's just a conference meeting though. So we need to make a decision, but maybe we already have made a decision. Alan, are we legally kind of, we've already made that decision? I mean, cause we just keep talking about it, but we haven't changed the comprehensive agreement.
Right. There's no decision to be made necessarily. You can all decide on a policy going forward. But any formal change would have to be agreed upon between the parties within Inter Miami. So, yeah, that, that, there's nothing to vote on.
Aren't you gonna have to amend it? Doesn't the agreement say that by July we were supposed to have everything completed?
Right. So depending on what is determined, there may be just, we could do an addendum to it. We could do whatever changes need to come forward and we could decide what the best vehicle is for that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think we should have that conversation in case we need to vote. You know, we do need to vote before we go on break because July is a couple of months away.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. That's it for me.
That's it? Okay. Commissioner McKenzie?
I don't, I don't have anything. I was just gonna bring up the, uh, piece that we spoke about with the, um, resiliency. I just thought that was important because after having a conversation with Anthony. But we were able to migrate it in.
Okay.
And I think I'm okay with it.
Okay.
We will be having the grand opening of the YMCA May 20th, 8:30 in the morning.
When? When is it?
May 20th.
May 20th?
Yeah. So.
That's close. Okay.
Real close. No vacation.
Commissioner Glassman, do you have any, did you do anything in the last couple of weeks?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Um, was it a pleasure to join you at the Brito, uh, public art statue unveiling?
Brito, Brito.
Brito, I'm sorry. Romero Brito. I'm sorry. Um, yes, that was a really nice event. Nice to have that art there. Um, that evening also was the Point Saturday High Civic Association meeting. Um, also a pleasure to join most everyone at the La Solas Hotel groundbreaking. Uh, um, our first five-star hotel coming to the city of Fort Lauderdale. Um, Wendy's retirement party was that day also from the city clerk's office. And I'm sure we all say thank you to her for all of those years, 13 years of service. Um, that evening, Tuesday, the 26th, uh, South Middle River Civic Association meeting. Um, Solid Waste keeps meeting. We keep meeting. We keep having excellent progress. And I think we're scheduled, Chris, are we scheduled next meeting to have an update on that?
I do not. Yes, we are.
Okay.
I do know because I have, if you, if you can tell me, yes, yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, also wanted to say happy anniversary to Cuba Libre. Um, air show was fantastic, uh, great event for our city. Um, coming up, we have the, uh, FLPD memorial on, uh, Wednesday. Always a very moving and a very important, uh, ceremony. Um, also very excited on Thursday, we have the La Solas Marina groundbreaking, uh, long time coming. Um, obviously everyone knows that we're all involved in Fleet Week this week and it's been great to see everyone around town. Um, I'll actually be joining the, um, Chabad La Solas. They're gonna have, every year they have an annual Fleet Week, um, community Shabbat dinner, which is really very nice. And they invite sailors, uh, to come and, uh, it's a lovely evening. Um, I'll be attending Sunrise Middle School next week on Tuesday, the 10th, uh, for a school presentation. Um, also we have the senior games coming through Broward County with a lot of ceremonies, um, on the La Solas Ocean Side Park and also the Intracoastal Park, um, between May 10th and May 23rd. Um, coming up also on the 11th, Sailboat Ben Civic Association meeting. Um, and we also have Thursday, I wanted to congratulate all the honorees for the 22nd Annual, uh, Riverwalk Tribute. Um, and, uh, also on the 13th, we have the Northeast 15th Avenue Beet Tactical Program, which is gonna be great. That's been going on now for a couple of months. Where we're doing a lot of work on there. People have been coming out. We're gonna have people coming out and painting. Um, and I want to thank our Transportation and Mobility Department for all of that. Uh, that same day on the 13th, we have, uh, HR Annual Service Award Luncheon. Um, just a couple of comments. Uh, Chris, you had sent us a memo on, um, January 3rd, 2022, uh, proposed redevelopment of a potential historic landmark. And then you went into some detail. Uh, people know it now as, uh, the Wells Fargo Building. I think originally, uh, it was the, uh, Southeast Everglades Bank Building. Um, it's actually on the Florida Master Site File, um, for the Historical Structure Form and was recommended for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Um, I would ask that perhaps we have a, um, presentation or staff pursue, uh, what a designation application would look like for that building um, and, and come before us, uh, what the merits would be. Is that something that could happen based on your memorandum, uh, on January 3rd to the commission?
I mean, I think everything you've said is, is accurate. Um, I would look to the commission to see if that's something the commission would want us to, uh, to pursue. This building is, it's on 3rd Avenue, I believe, down south of 17th Street.
It's actually, the actual address is 1710 South Andrews Avenue.
It's on South Andrews. Okay. So a block off of 3rd instead in that 1700 block. Um, is there any opposition to us pursuing that? I don't know that we've concluded that it would qualify for designation, but we could certainly start the work to determine, to make a recommendation one way or the other. Where is this thing?
1710, uh, South Andrews Avenue.
Right near Broward General.
Yeah.
It's south of there.
Chris sent us the memorandum on the 3rd. It's a very, uh, interesting structure. Uh, um, I'm sure everyone would recognize it if you saw it, but, um, trying to see the year that it was built.
With those undulating, probably the wrong word.
Undulating concrete like canopies all around the building. Yes, it goes, it dates back to 1955.
That's my favorite ATM.
Anyway, if we could maybe just get a report and, um, if it merits that designation? Or I know there is, uh, language in our code in terms of emergency situations. I don't know if we've reached that level yet, but, um, anyway, Chris, your memorandum piqued my interest on it, so.
So I think, you know, we'll have Anthony just address it real quick. It would be his group that would do that work. Anthony?
Yes, so, uh, we could definitely come back with a report and a presentation talking about whether we believe it meets the qualifications for designation. It doesn't meet the qualifications for impending threat because there really is no demo permit or anything right now per our ordinance. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't start the process by looking at it.
Excellent. Yes, Chris, good.
Yep. As lo, as long as there's no opposition to the commission, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'd like to see.
Doesn't appear that there is, so.
Is, is there a project proposal or something right now?
So we do have a DRC submittal, um, for that site that's currently under review. We talked to the applicant about what their intentions are with the portion of the site that seems to be the most desirable to maintain, which is the awning, the kind of wave paraboid awning. Um, they did indicate at one point that they could incorporate it into the design, but we don't know if that's going to be ultimately the case at this point.
Who's the applicant?
Uh, Broward General owns the property. I believe they're the applicant.
Great. What? All right. So that's good.
What else, Commissioner?
Um, oh, that's right. Vice Mayor, you're running the meeting. So I, I have, I was wondering where that voice is coming from. Um, I have one more item I would like to discuss, but I would, uh, uh, request that I wait until the, uh, the mayor returns to the desk and we have all five of us here.
Vice Mayor, can I, can I just add something?
Yeah.
Not to that, but I want to go back. Uh, I want to ask the city manager a question. And then also I just want to mention that, uh, they had the color run this, this past week.
Yep.
Thousands of people downtown. Um, I attended it last minute, um, kicked it off, but it was, it was great. Another good event in our city. But my question is our garbage pickup. I know we've been having some struggles with it throughout the city. And, um, you all indicated that we may, um, that they're not gonna renew.
That's correct.
And we may look at other alternatives. Do you have any? Um, cause I hear things floating around. So where are we?
It would be our intent at this point to go back to the competitive market with a solicitation for a different contract vendor. Um, we were, and I sent that in a commission memo. I think it might've gone out during this meeting actually, that, uh, um, we've officially been notified by our current vendor that they do not seek a, an extension of the contract. So we're given another choice but to go back to the market.
But I also heard that we may consider doing it internally?
Oh, no.
I'm sorry. That's what I'm hearing. I want to, I want, I want you to tell me where we are.
That, that would be rumor. Um, I mean, brought up to, for the purposes of discussion, but not, uh, not, doesn't seem feasible.
Okay. So we are looking for, go out for bid when that day comes.
Yeah, us and every other large city in the United States. This is industry.
When is that, when is that due date?
Um, it's this late summer to fall, I think.
No, because the reason why I'm asking, cause, you know, I mean, I, I don't want it to stick up and we can't have a vendor services. Cause the other companies already said, we're out of here.
Correct.
And I understand, and Steve, you probably can speak better to it because you sit on the, on the waste board.
Solid waste.
Solid waste. So I don't want us to get caught not having services for our residents.
I agree. You know, we don't want that either. So we'll, uh, um, I'll look and find that date before tonight and, and update you on it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thanks. You're welcome. Um, okay, great. Uh, just a few mentions from me. Um, had a great, just to add on what's been shared. Great, uh, city employee picnic fun day at Snyder Park. I thought that was great. So Chris and Phil and whole team just happy, happy day. And that was great. Um, so excellent day for that. Uh, Fleet Week has been mentioned. Yeah, uh, let's see, Sunday night, great welcoming for our two Navy destroyers, Navy, uh, and Coast Guard personnel here. And I just want to thank the, not only for Fleet Week, all the work, but, um, you know, spring break and just our police, fire. This is heavy lifting and just, you know, uh, the amazing work they do day in and day out and that, um, it's just gone so well, I think. And Chris, is that your, I mean, I just, I feel like this has been a great couple of months of just excellent work from out on the streets, taking care, helping folks, visiting and so forth.
I've gotten no complaints and nothing but compliments. So that's an indicator that I would agree.
I mean, that's just, it's phenomenal. So chiefs, thank you, uh, for all that work. Let's see, anything else to add? That's most of it. Couple thoughts here, one is, let's see, neighborhood presentations, so we have, I think tonight, maybe we have five, is that what it is, Chris, five neighborhood?
It is, it's been toned down by one, so now it's four, but-
Now it's four. So, just a thought for us as a Commission, and I was just trying to brainstorm ideas, is, and you all may have better ideas than I do on this, so my thought, one of my initial thoughts is, neighborhood presentations are important and great, but I think maybe the appropriate place for them might be at a city conference meeting, like during the afternoon, keep the time limit that they have, but that allows, I think, for a little bit more, if we want to talk about whatever topic they talked about, we just have a little bit more flexibility in that, and then maybe set it so that neighborhood presentations can only be once a quarter at a city conference meeting, so in other words, you know, the first city conference meeting of that quarter, we can have up to the first six people or five people that, that apply to be a neighborhood presenter, can present at that city conference meeting, and then there will not be neighborhood presentations until the next quarter. So those were just a couple of thoughts, and then the one other thing I thought about was, would maybe say that, hey, individual neighbors can only present maybe once a year, or something, have some kind of, anyway, just want to throw that out for thoughts or reactions or better ideas.
So, let me ask you a question, if you're done.
Yeah.
And I was trying to understand where it is you're going, is it because it's too long, or what, what has brought you to this?
I, I feel like it's just, I feel like it's a better, I think we can have better discussions at a conference meeting, and then, I don't know, I think having a certain time, certain when we can do that would be good for us, too, I don't know, rather than just any time, it's just some thoughts, but.
I'll just say this, I don't have a problem with whatever we come up with.
Yeah.
I know in the past, we never really allowed the presentation to become a discussion, it was just a moment where the resident come up and express themselves, and we'd say, "Thank you," da-da-da, and we'd go, and if it needed something like that, they would bring it back at a later date, but I think we just, we debate-
Right.
Every issue, so I mean, I'm fine either way you want to do it, since you have pointed it out, you want to do it at conference, you want to do it once a quarter, but I think we all just need to come to a consensus on what it is we want to do and when we want to do it, but I'd rather limit the time, but I think, I'm very flexible on this one, how we do it.
What do you think, Commissioner?
I, I just think we have to keep it how it is.
Then keep it how it is.
I think people work during the day, and I think, you know, our full attention is really at night, because that's when we're voting, I think since we are, you know, elected officials, just hearing our public, and I know we hear them at different district meetings and stuff, but I feel like it's, it's important, maybe, I think, like Commissioner McKenzie said, maybe it's up to us not to have a dialogue, or maybe we can take it offline and have a follow-up conversation if we need to, you know, work with that particular neighbor on an issue, maybe just not do it at that time. I think it's, I think it's important that we allow neighbors, I don't think it's really been abused in terms of too much time, I mean, I think, I think about all the, you know, we waste a lot of time talking about a lot of things that maybe aren't so important to the public, and I think hearing their voice, it should be preserved.
Okay, and should we allow them to do it at conference meetings, or only?
I think so, because I think they're working during the day, so I think that's why we have our Commission meetings at night, is because people are working during the day. I mean, I don't know why we have them at night, because the school board's during the day, and the county's during the day, but-
Right, but some people work at night, though, right?
Some people do, sure, and maybe, so maybe we can have both, maybe we can have conference and Commission, depending on their work schedule. But I think, I think we need to be here, you know, whenever we're here in this chamber, the public needs to be allowed to come in and speak, so maybe we do it at both times, that's a good point.
Just ask them-
Maybe you alternate.
Yeah.
Make it to present.
When they would want to present.
Yeah.
So then maybe you would alternate conference versus regular?
Oh yeah, that's an interesting point.
You can alternate, so people can accommodate their schedules. I like the idea of doing it in the afternoon, because I like the idea of us maybe fleshing out a subject, without having to vote, or without having to worry about a really long agenda, I like the idea that you could then talk about it.
Okay, yeah.
And I would agree with you that maybe if we're going to offer it at both, then it wouldn't be every month both, you would need to limit it somehow. I also wonder, are there people that are not able to do these, because sometimes we see the same people talking on the same topics all the time, I mean, are there people that get shut out?
From time to time, yes.
See, that's something I think we should address.
Yeah, how do they get shut out? Sorry, I'm not-
So, the, the total for a meeting is five.
Okay.
So, once we hit the limit, we tell them that the next one-
Have to go to the next meeting.
Yeah, and there is a part of the guidelines, that if you had spoke at the last meeting, and, and we hit five, and then there was a couple more people, they would take those spots over the people that had spoken.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, because there was a guy here, a couple Commission meetings ago, wanted to speak, and I told him to go see you about how to engage that.
Yeah.
I don't know his name or anything.
He has the application, but I, he hasn't sent it in.
Okay, so that's, that's a good point, Commissioner Glassman.
You don't, and you don't allow last-minute substitutions, like you just said, one drop out already, right, Chris?
We were just notified that one, tonight has been removed from the agenda.
But there's no way to reach someone and say, "Hey, we can go to you now," because-
There's not.
Right, see.
Okay, so-
And Commissioner, since they're not legally required, what you can do, you have all the flexibility in the world, so what you can do is, if you want to limit or give more opportunity, would be to have maybe one person being able to speak once a quarter, and then that gives more opportunities for others, and then the next quarter, then they can re-sign up for something else, and just limit the frequency per person, maybe opening it up to more, but you have all the flexibility, because it's not a legal requirement.
Okay, so, do, do we have, David, times where there's one person that wants to keep speaking, but they're unable to, or, it sounds like they're probably not the case?
No.
Yeah, they're, they're able to.
Do you have to be a City of Fort Lauderdale resident to speak?
I don't think so, yeah.
Don't you, that might be, that might kind of make sense, I mean, unless it's on a speaking about it, a resolution or a public hearing or something, but a public, a neighborhood presentation, shouldn't that be from a neighbor?
Are we allowed to set that kind of a restriction, though?
You could, again, because you're not, it's not, obviously, the, the general public, regardless of whether they're citizens or not, can speak on any item that's on, for a decision for you to be made, so that's really the legal requirement, that they're allowed to speak on something you're going to decide upon. If it's an issue that you, if this is a program that you want for your constituents to come up and raise issues, you could limit it that way.
Okay.
We cut some of them out right now, tonight.
Well, we have to vote.
No, but it's a valid point.
It's a valid point, I would prefer to be-
We're trying to streamline the process, we're gonna streamline it, streamline it, let's get it over with, but here's the thing, I'm out of here, and I think it's only befitting that the people, that I believe I have my colleagues, set something that can work for them in my absence, to better manage these meetings, so I would, I would respectfully, you know, back down, but I would also offer my, my, my opinion or advice, but you get to do what's flexible for you, what's gonna be best for you. I wasn't used to getting into a dialogue with presenters, this Commission, we changed that, it's different, and obviously, Commissioner Glassman wants to continue that from what he advocated, and if that's the case, do it, make it flexible, make it best for the ones that are, that are gonna be here past, past November, and so you can keep moving, moving the, moving the needle.
And again, just so I'm clear, I know it's a basic question, but neighborhood presentation covers a topic that is not on the agenda, is that, am I saying that right? Okay, so in other words-
But it, it, it can be, I mean, there's coincidences where it does happen, so we don't say, well, because we have an item, you can't do your neighbor, we've never done that before, to my knowledge, so sometimes there's coincidences, especially with-
So historically, they just come out with their own subject matter.
Right, it's, it's something different, because I just want to make sure, obviously, what we're all saying is, we're not saying, if it's an agenda item, unlimited number of people can speak to it based on our, you know, desires, but that, that one limited. So, okay, so I, I think there's maybe a sense of, hey, let's, let's offer evening time, and, so, city Commission meetings and city workshops as times where we could hear neighborhood presentations, right, so offer both, do you all want to, just any meeting, any of these, or do you want to try to limit it to?
I think what Commissioner Glassman said was pretty-
The, yeah.
Alternate.
Alternate.
One during the day, one during the night, I mean, it's only two opportunities.
It gives that-
Two opportunities a month, okay, I like it, so, so the first city Commission meeting of the month, the opportunity to speak as a neighborhood presentation would be in the afternoon, okay, the city Commission Conference Meeting, and then the second Commission Meeting of the month in the evening, is that fair?
That's twice as much as you're doing now.
Are you gonna be doing twice a month?
You're doing it per meeting now, we don't do that.
Per quarter, Steve, you said-
Nope.
He just said a month.
Yeah.
Every other meeting.
When we do that quarter, it's just all in one month.
Oh, you want to say, okay, great, oh, so you're saying, oh, so you are saying, so-
No, I'm saying what you were saying, but what Commissioner Glassman said.
Oh, I thought he wanted every meeting, or you guys-
No.
Okay, great.
Every other meeting.
Oh, great, okay, so, do you want to do once a quarter? No.
I don't think that's enough.
Heather's concerned about it.
No, I'm, what I would think is-
Once a month.
One month in the evening, the next month in the afternoon.
Got you.
Alternating.
Okay, so in other words-
But you're still doing it every month, you're just giving people the ability to work around their own schedule.
I like it.
First Tuesday of the month is day, second Tuesday of the month is night.
Exactly.
And then, I, I do want to pursue what you said, by the way, it used to be called neighborhood presentation, now it's just called neighbor presentation, so I think, Commissioner Maritas, when you say, is a neighbor a Fort Lauderdale resident, that is something that we should figure out.
I think that's important, really important, because I don't think people from other cities should take up our time giving a neighborhood presentation.
I'm all for that.
They can speak on an agenda item, certainly, but we don't need to, yeah.
And did you want to limit the amount of times one person can speak per quarter, or do you want unlimited if they sign up for every single one?
What's the, what do we do now? I thought you said there is some kind of limit we have in place now?
It's always the same.
If, if we didn't hit five each month, someone could keep coming each month, at this point, that's what they could do.
Maybe we just do one change at a time, maybe we start with this, I don't think we have people in our own city who are abusing this necessarily.
We have a couple that abuse it, yes, we should.
A couple, there are people outside of our city, maybe.
Is, let me ask you, fair question, let me ask you another question, is five the appropriate max number for, is that, is that good, do we want it lower, do you want it higher? I don't, I don't have a strong, I was thinking three, but maybe five's-
Three during the day and three at night, that's six a month.
Three during the day, three at night? Well, hold on, that's only-
You're alternating, you're alternating.
You're alternating, that's three a month.
Three during the day, three at night, that's six a month, that's what I was-
No, it's alternating months, one month it's day, one month it's night.
I, I was thinking the first Commission meeting of the month is during the day, the second Commission meeting of the month is night.
No, that would be every meeting.
That, that would be every meeting, but it would be less per meeting, so then it's six per month versus 10 per month.
They were thinking three neighborhood presentations, or five neighborhood presentations a month, total.
Right, if we did three during the day and three at night, it would be six for the month.
We just do once a month.
Once a month, five.
Come this month, do it at lunchtime, and-
Right.
Look at us, we spend a lot of time talking about evening time.
Okay.
I would do three, three.
So the idea is, okay, the next month, it would be five optional during the day, the next month would be five optional in the evening, at the first meeting, for both.
But also make some recommendations, please, I mean, I'm interested to hear what you think would work best for this, and also to follow up on Commissioner Maritas's idea, which we all seem to concur with, about being a neighbor, being a Fort Lauderdale resident.
So, right now, you're, you're dealing with, the status quo is five per month, and so, no big deal, if you want to go to swapping between-
Five per month or five per meeting?
Five per month, you only have neighbor presentations on the first meeting of the month.
Okay, got it, I wasn't following that, okay, so now we only five per month.
So, the way, what I'm taking away is that, so let's play this forward, in June, we would do five neighbor presentation opportunities during conference meeting.
Yes.
In July, we'll do five neighbor presentations in the evening meeting, and then swap back and forth. I am absolutely willing to, to encourage you to consider maybe Fort Lauderdale citizens, residents only for these time slots.
Yep, I agree.
And, and maybe, you know, to further make sure it's just not abused, allow every individual who lives in Fort Lauderdale one opportunity per quarter to, to speak during neighbor presentation.
Yeah.
Apply, and they, and other people need to go ahead of them until everyone has been allowed the opportunity, then they can get back in line.
As I've talked to each of you individually, that's sort of a summary of what I've heard, absent what discussion that just happened here, the flipping of the meetings is, is a nuance, but that's fine, that's easy to do, right, David? Yeah, so why don't we try that? Why don't we move to five conference, five evening, Fort Lauderdale residents only, and one time per quarter?
Yep.
I just want to be seen as making sure we're equally as available to our neighbors, so it sounds like keeping the five per month, we are, giving a day option may help some people.
Yes.
Limiting it to once a quarter gives everybody the chance to speak, and limiting it to neighbors gives our neighbors who we represent more opportunities to speak, so I just want to make sure, however it's communicated, it's not that we're trying to take away an opportunity from neighbors, we're trying to create more opportunities.
Trying to be more efficient in how the meeting runs.
And the neighbors still have the opportunity, as often occurs, to speak to you individually, and if an issue arises to the level that you bring it to the Commission, then it's addressed there as well, so they have that other opportunity as well.
And to the nuance of what we're calling it, just say what, say what you all want it called again, it's, Commissioner, you were saying?
It's called now, neighbor presentation.
Neighbor present, and that's what you-
It used to be neighborhood presentation.
Yeah.
And now it's called neighbor presentation.
So, yeah, I don't think it makes sense to be called neighborhood presentation, because that's a physical place.
Neighbor's good, neighbor, so you're good with what it's called?
Make sure they're a neighbor.
Neighbor, and it is, and how do, how do we do that, we just ask them, how do you know if they're a resident or not?
They'll apply through the clerk's office.
Clerk's office.
BCPA.
Right now, when you sign up, you have to, you have to answer that question.
You have to answer that, okay.
And the clerk will verify.
Hmm?
Yep.
Got it.
Clerk will verify before it's counted.
Okay, and then timing, remind me, what, what do we give them, three minutes? I just forget the timing.
It's longer than three.
Yeah, but timing, timing based on our charter comes from, from the chair.
From the mayor, okay, but it's normally three, is that what it is, or normally three?
Yeah, that's what's on the application.
That's what's on the application.
Yeah, three.
It's three, okay, so that would, we'd kind of try to keep-
Which goes back, if we, if we're gonna say that-
Right.
Then the chair has to mandate that, but right now, it's been, we've deviated from that, is what I'm saying, so if you're gonna put it back in, it's three minutes, not 30 minutes, because it's something that's not favorable to, you know, growing grass on the, on the swales, so it's gotta be three minutes and it's over.
Okay, all right, good, and thanks for indulging me on that, and I think that's good, I like where we're heading on that. I have one other topic, but I'll wait till the mayor gets back, so I'll stop there, anything other for Commission reports, I think we're good, so can we move to the CRA meeting? Is that right?
I've got one report I'd like to give you.
Oh yeah, Chris, go ahead.
If I can remember my password.
You can come back at some nice meeting.
Just a, a quick update, I received this earlier in the week from Broward County, it was addressed to Mayor Udine, I don't know if it was addressed inappropriately or not, but we'll figure that out, in related, in relation to 1016 Waverly Road from the Florida Department of State, it reads, "It's a pleasure to notify you that the National Park Service officially listed the above referenced property in the National Register of Historic Places on April 20th, 2022. On behalf of the Secretary of State Laurel M. Lee and our Historic Preservation Staff, I congratulate you on achieving this formal recognition of the historic significance of this property," and so that's related to that property that we acquired on Waverly Road near Sailboat Bend, so I just wanted to bring that to your, your attention.
What was the opening sentence of that? Chris, can you just repeat the opening sentence?
"It's a pleasure to notify you that the National Park Service officially listed the above referenced property in the National Register of Historic Places on April 20th, 2022."
Okay, great, so it was accepted for the National Register, that's wonderful, congratulations to everyone who wrote the application, and I think there were a few entities involved in that, right? I think the Historical Society helped, our own Historic Preservation Board staff, and DSD, right? Anthony, everyone was sort of in on that together, so that's great, we should, we should actually do a really nice press release on that, that's a very nice honor for that property.
Agreed, yeah, it just came in, just came in yesterday.
That's excellent.
That's all I have. That's all I have.
I got a question and maybe Steve can answer. You sat on the historic board, right?
Actually, I didn't, I didn't sit on the city's historical preservation board, I sat on the county historical commission.
Which is better. I mean.
Which is better.
It's a wider scope in terms of knowledge.
Yeah.
This is hypothetical because people are approaching, they ask you questions all the time, I'm not familiar with it. I, I send it through the channels. Let's say we built a new city building across the street and someone wants to designate that. Does that meet a criteria? The property does, but not the new building, right?
Wait, I'm sorry.
Say we're gonna build a new building across the street, city of Fort Lauderdale, and a resident or neighbor wants to designate that new property.
A new building? Designated historic?
That's what they're saying. So, but the criteria can only be on the land, not the new building, am I correct? If the land meets that criteria.
Well, that's probably a better question for either Anthony or Trish, but I think you'd need more details to flesh that out.
That's why I'm, just, I'm fishing right now because.
Yeah, because our code has criteria for designation.
And I saw, but I don't see new buildings, I see.
Well, typically, land is only designated if it's got an archaeological or historical significance or.
Yeah, the criteria, so.
But a brand new building would never be designated historic.
Yeah, the, I don't have the criteria in front of me, but what it basically says, if there's a historic event that happened on that location, or as Commissioner Glassman stated, it's an archaeological site, that's when you would see the land be qualified to be considered for designation. Typically, we don't really see that here in, in Fort Lauderdale, we haven't seen it yet.
It's gotta be archaeological, I mean, in terms of.
Well, I mean, we do have some archaeological sites and, and they're listed generally on a location map that we have, but there's specific locations with the county. You don't like to share those information because you'll get people that can loot the sites, but.
The letter that Chris just read pertaining to the new park in Sailboat Bend that we've acquired, that land is, made it to the National Register, I would assume as an archaeological site.
Well, and it was well known that there was a midden there, but there are other archaeological.
Right, but there's no structure, there's no structure there.
Right.
Okay. I'll come to you because I, I got something brewing. I want to just make sure I have the right criterias, whether it's yes or no.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Commissioner. Just a couple other events I just wanted to mention. Ryan from my office presented the proclamation to the MAD, Mothers Against Driving, Five Dash on Sunday, and then also to Carolyn Mazza, the World Creativity and Innovation Week. And so it's been a good proclamation filled last couple of weeks. Alan, anything else till we go to?
No, you're gonna convene conference and then re, I'm, I'm sorry.
Conclude.
Well, we're not, the mayor has the reports.
Right.
And I have one more item. We're gonna come back.
We're gonna come back to it.
Yeah, as long as it's clear that we're suspending.
Suspend it. Okay. So I'll suspend the city commission conference meeting now. And we will open the CRA meeting of May 3rd. City clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Moritas?
Here.
Mr. Glassman?
Here.
Mr. McKenzie?
Here.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Here.
And Chair Trentalis is not present.
All right, we'll go, anything I need to read before going into the motions? City clerk around, okay, great. So first motion, M1, motion approving minutes for April 5th, 2022, CRA board meeting and April 19th, thank you. CRA board meeting. Motion approved?
Approved.
Second.
Second. All right, if you'd call the role, please.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Thank you. M2, motion approving a property and business improvement plan incentive forgivable loan in the amount of $125,000 and a non-residential facade program incentive forgivable loan in the amount of $75,000 to Rhythms 2.0 LLC and Rhythms 2.0, a soul food and seafood restaurant proposed at 733, 735 Cisthrunk Boulevard. I have one speaker, Michelle, supports it, questions only. If that's still the case, Michelle, wherever you are. Great, anything else you'd like to share? Okay.
Did I miss anything?
Oh, it's been incredible.
We did a lot.
Really, got a lot done, mayor.
We changed the city.
Changed the city. We give you the gavel back.
And we want to thank you for your service.
Vice mayor's a game changer.
Yeah, he's very creative in his approach.
Well, by the way, by the way, you're no longer mayor.
Allowed to vote.
So did you do the CRA?
We're doing it now.
We're doing it now, okay.
Second item.
Okay, I see that. No questions. Okay. Okay, someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, please call the role.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Mr. Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and M2 is approved. M3, motion approving $355,000 for finally Friday on Cisthrunk Series. Any questions with regard to that? How much longer is that, is that gonna continue through the duration?
I think it's the final, the final series.
It's the final series, right?
Yeah.
Really good turnout for these things.
Oh man.
I know, but we're just gonna, but CRA is gonna run out of money, so.
Yeah, but this one, they're gonna, um.
This is the end of the.
Same day of the, the Y, so it's gonna be.
Oh, right, right, right.
Deal.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, moved and seconded, please call the role.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mr. McKenzie?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Mr. Moritas?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and M3 is approved. Is there any further business at the CRA?
There is not.
There is none. The CRA meeting is now concluded.
Mayor, we had sus, just, we had suspended the city commission conference meeting, so you can re.
Okay. So we resume, thank you folks for being here. We resumed the conference meeting. Where did you leave off?
So we had done all of our reports, Commissioner Glassman has an item, I have an item.
All right, so let me finish my report.
And then you can do your report, yep.
So I think some of these have been said, the, a couple of things I want to point out that the, I attended the city employee picnic, it was really a great event, everybody really had a great time, great weather, lots of people drinking beer at 10 o'clock in the morning, but hey. I was also the keynote speaker at the Biz Now State of the Market Forum on April 26th. Large turnout that morning, a lot of entrepreneurs in the audience, so it was really a great thing that happened in Fort Lauderdale, very excited that so many people participated in that event. Let's see. Made some welcome remarks to city manager groups from around the country, there were about, about 12 or 13 who participated in that event at the Conrad Hotel. Dedicated the COVID Memorial Tree of Life at Broward, Broward Health on South Andrews Avenue, a very nice event. And basically dedicating it to the healthcare workers who worked so hard during the COVID pandemic. I wanted to participate in the Fort Lauderdale Cares Day, but. It rained, it was sad.
What's nice is.
It was sad. I got up and it was lightning and thundering and I knew that wasn't gonna make sense. I hope we can.
The color wrong got in though.
I, I wish we had a rain date, so. The air show was really great, I went on Sunday, perfect day, everybody was, everyone had a good, I didn't, did anyone take any air shots, like, like maybe drone shots or something of the beach that day?
There are some.
I would love to see what the turnout was for that day because we, being on the beach, you can't really see that much.
It was huge.
Do we have any estimates of, uh, crowd size?
I haven't heard a number, no.
Okay.
Okay. I gave a presentation to Akasha O'Hobbo, who, great young lady who is up and coming in the tennis world and her father was there and many people were there to cheer her on. She's become a, a really a, a great lady in tennis, probably see a lot about her in the years to come. And, and then of course, that same, that same evening, the Fleet Week, we had the welcoming event. The vice mayor gave a, a great speech welcoming the, the folks that are now in town. I think there are three naval ships that are in port and we, they're open to the public and, and people should feel free to contact us. Who should they contact, I guess, to, to see if they can get an?
They, they can reach out to me in my office, I'm happy to direct them.
Well, the vice mayor to sign up for appointments to see how they get tours of the ship. So upcoming event, I think Commissioners Glassman talked about tomorrow, the FOP Annual Police Officer Memorial at Espinade Park, I invite everybody to participate. La Solas Marina groundbreaking, wow. It's about time you got that going.
Well, someone had to finish it.
Let's see, on Saturday, we're celebrating the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month with council generals of, from Japan and Taiwan, that'll be at noon at the Museum of Discovery and Science. That same evening, I will be welcoming the Gayman's Chorus, the 35th Anniversary Musical Celebration, 8:00 PM at the United Church of Christ. West Marine, West Marine is moving its entire headquarters from the west coast to Fort Lauderdale. And they'll be celebrating and announcing that event at the Lauderdale Yacht Club, May 10th at 6:00 PM. Let's see. May 16th is a lunch forum with United Arab Emirates Council General from New York and head of the UAE US Business Alliance at 1:00 PM at the Tower Club. Anyone interested in participating, please let me know. I guess that pretty much covers all of that. And I understand you folks talked about neighborhood presentations and you came to a decision once a quarter? And that once could be either in the afternoon or the evening?
Twice a quarter.
Once a quarter?
Twice a quarter. A quarter. It'll be, there'll be a afternoon opportunity up to five and then an evening opportunity.
But it's every month.
Once a month.
Up to five.
Every month?
It's a month.
Alternating months, afternoon, evening.
Well, that's not a quarter then.
Right.
No, it's every month.
Every month, five though.
Yeah.
It's only five.
One person can only speak once a quarter.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, and it has to be a city of Fort Lauderdale resident.
Okay.
Since it's a neighbor.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
And the mayor can't be president. I'm kidding.
One of the things I want to bring up is, I brought it up before and I'll bring it up again, people who ride their vehicles on La Solas in A1A, especially motorcyclists who rev their engines or play loud music, and it's really, really takes away from the experience of sitting outdoors, especially in the sidewalk cafes we have in La Solas. You know, we're talking about expanding sidewalks and adding to the restaurant experience and all it does is become deafening and uncomfortable to have to sit outside. Couple Sundays ago, I was at a restaurant on La Solas Sunday, after, Sunday evening, and it was just absolutely ridiculous. I do not want to see La Solas Boulevard turn into Ocean Drive, and that's where we're headed. So I spoke with our city attorney about what the legalities, the legalities are and what our jurisdiction is to try to regulate that. He indicated to me that it might be at the state level. So I'm gonna make some, I'm gonna do some research on that and see, talk with our folks at the state level to see how we can collaborate, trying to give the city of Fort Lauderdale the authority to enforce noise levels on the street. You with me?
Mayor, I can update you on a couple of things that we spoke about in that regard. There's actually a current bill, HB 1435, that is enrolled, so it would be waiting for the governor's.
Signature?
Signature. So there's a statute on the books in Florida that, and, and there's two issues. There's one dealing with music emanating from the vehicle and others are the exhaust and the engine and so on.
Right.
So first, let's deal with music. In that regard, there is a Florida statute prohibiting that. However, it was ruled unconstitutional in 2012.
Okay.
In order to fix that, the legislature has amended it and we think, and looking at it, we think it fixes it. So if the governor signs it into law, we will have a statute, a Florida statute now prohibiting that type of loud music emanating from the vehicle.
And so we can enforce that then?
Yes.
Okay.
On the vehicle side, you're correct, and when we spoke, we are preempted with regards to noise emanating from, let's say, the exhaust and the engines. The levels are set by Florida statute. And, and there are some practical realities that come into it that make it difficult. If you have a loud vehicle, you know, whether it be a motorcycle, a lot of the motorcycles produced now, you know, are possibly louder than they used to be, it's difficult for officers to gauge just by looking or even hearing whether a vehicle is modified illegally or is above the decibel levels. And it, it's interesting, if you look at the statute, the test, it, it's not just like plainly audible, but there's a whole formula you have to follow in order to be able to determine if the vehicle is actually not in compliance. So you literally have to measure 50 feet from the vehicle that you suspect of being too loud and not even recognizing the fact that there may be ambient sound that's preventing you from doing this, you have to measure 50 feet, go out and have decibel readers, which makes it almost impossible.
We have, we have radar guns that, that seem to work and, you know, we can certainly set up, you know, stage it in such a way that, you know, a certain point, I mean, there's gotta be a way.
Well, you're, no, there's, but it would come down to essentially your police officers having to stage a measurement out, and, and I'm not saying it's impossible, but you'd have to stage your measurement out on the field on A1A, for example, or busy La Solas, which will be difficult because you've got all the ambience. I guess what I'm trying to say is what the Florida statute requires of an officer to actually cite someone is practically impossible to do in the field.
Yeah, but hey, you know, it's like that Supreme Court justice said, you know, I know, I know pornography when I see it, well, I know loud noises when I hear it. And we all know them and we don't have to kid ourselves and there are ways to try to handle the situation. And I think we should make the attempt and put the presumption on our side and let them try to defend it that they didn't make that noise. So we have to start making examples of people and to show that La Solas is no longer going to be a staging area for people who want to, you know, who want to, who are looking for attention. I'm sick and tired of having.
Agreed.
I'm sick and tired of having to suffer through that and, and I'm saying this on behalf of the community, so we're gonna work together. So I will, Scott Wyman, I need a letter to the governor encouraging him to sign that bill and, and anything else, Alan, we can work together, try to figure out.
We also have our ordinance, but that has even less teeth because we can cite somebody as a code enforcement issue under Chapter 11, but when we go to special magistrate, I, we have nothing to lean. I have no property, I can, I can't lean their vehicles, it's not a residence. So we, we can charge them a fine, but if they don't pay the fine, there's not a whole thing we.
Well, we'll figure it out.
Right, so we'll have to.
So, so in that bill, is it more emission or is it, is it combined with both of them or what?
No, the bill deals strictly from loud music and noise coming, emanating from the vehicle.
Lastly, as all of you know, the county commission is meeting on Thursday, in two days, to have their own workshop to decide what they're gonna do with regard to our government campus. So we have not been invited, although I know there will be staff people listening in. But at some, I thought it would be premature to bring that discussion up here until we hear what their intentions are. But, you know, if they decide they want to, you know, can it, then we will go to Plan B. We've been talking, I know a lot of us in the community and at the staff level have have been talking about alternatives, and, um, uh, and so, but if they decide, you know, they want to continue to go forward, then, you know, we have not met since last June, it's almost a year. How embarrassing and ridiculous is that for a partnership to be, you know, to be so distanced from one another over, talking about hundreds of millions of dollars we're spending? So, you know, despite the fact that we've asked for meetings time and again, month after month, and we've been, we've been refused that opportunity, um, and if they're indecisive, then, then maybe then we'll make a decision. You know, if they don't know what they want to do, you know, we have to decide what we want to do. So, um, anyway, I just bring that up now so that, uh, uh, you know, we'd be prepared, perhaps at our next meeting, at our next conference meeting, to have a full, a full-throated discussion about what we're going to do going forward.
Let's say we do, right?
Let's say we do what?
Do, do our own.
Right.
You have any ideas, sites?
I do, I do.
Just hypothetically, I'm not saying, I'm not advocating that-
I know.
Break away from the parade, I'm just saying.
I, we have, we have some ideas that, uh, I think would be very, um, would be exciting and, uh, uh, and, and, uh, cheaper, and, uh, and I think it would be-
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you reveal them at a later date?
I will reveal them.
Ask the question.
Are you hearing Scott Wyman?
Okay, I'm done. All right, so Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this was the last item on my list, and I, I, I want everyone to know that I did think about this, uh, for quite a while. Um, I debated whether to bring this forward or not, um, but in the end, um, I, I did feel that it's an important discussion to have among all of us, um, because the city commission must always be a place where each commissioner and the mayor demonstrate respect for each other and behave in a manner that is befitting our office. While differences of opinion and viewpoints are welcome, personal slurs, insults, disparaging remarks, and highly unsuitable language are not. I also want to make it clear that this is not just about language that Commissioner McKenzie used pertaining to me, but it is about conduct that is never acceptable from any one of us towards anyone else on this dais. We must always strive to be the best that we can be and set an example for our boards, our committees, and the public at large. We live in times that are very troubling, and political discourse has sunk to a new low. The Fort Lauderdale City Commission need not participate in that race to the bottom and need not participate at a level that is beneath us. We must do all we can to rise above name-calling, making rude and defamatory and disrespectful statements toward each other, and expressing flat-out lies. Each of us must demonstrate respect, civility, and professionalism that elevates our discourse, not speaking in a way that demeans this body. Each of us has a responsibility to call out hateful, personal attacks, and wildly inappropriate behavior. Now, to the particulars, on April 19th, while we were discussing Commission District Maps, Commissioner McKenzie stated that I, quote, "did not want black people in my district." I was highly offended by that remark, but because of the absurdity of the comment, I let it go. On April 27th, Commissioner McKenzie went even further, crossing the line in the process, and he said, quote, "The mayor's going to allow you to do what he wants to because you're his wingman. You can't handle the truth, Stephen. You can't handle it. You stole property that belongs to black people. You're a racist." To say that I was, and still am, appalled, would be an understatement. Words are important. If just one person in the chambers that day, or just one person watching at home, believed Commissioner McKenzie's words, then shame on him, and shame on all of us. The statement the mayor makes at the beginning of every commission meeting states, quote, "To help ensure decorum, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines: Please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, destructive, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way." Commissioner McKenzie and all of us must adhere to the mayor's words, the people's words. Censure in politics is a formal, public reprimand and condemnation of an elected official who displays unacceptable behavior. This commission must go on the record and take an aggressive approach in exposing those among us who behave disrespectfully towards another. I am requesting that we issue a resolution of censure, and perhaps we explore the possibility of a code of civility, or some such instrument whereby we codify the language. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner McKenzie, would you like to respond to that?
Respond to what?
What he's just-
His commission report.
Well, but he, he mentioned you specifically. Is there anything you want to say? I mean, I want to give you that opportunity.
He has the right to express his, uh, freedom of speech, and, um, I do agree with, um, that we should conduct ourselves in a professional manner at all times. I think he codified at the beginning, but he said "all of us," and, um, I agree with him wholeheartedly in terms of how we should act, and, um, but I don't have to debate it or, or answer anything. I serve at the will of the people, the neighbors, the residents. I don't serve at the will of this commission. And there are rules currently in our charter and rules of Robert's Order on how we're supposed to conduct ourselves. I think day one with this commission, um, somehow we forgot about those rules. Now that someone's feelings are hurt, they want to refer to the rules. The rules have always been here, um, and we just need to adhere to them. Thank you.
Mr. Wallow, do we have, uh, do we have a rule of censure in this city?
No, there's nothing codified with that regard. Uh, typically, uh, you know, any action like that by the commission would be something in the form of a resolution. Um, we don't, uh, even on the parliamentary side, we don't, even though we, we try to adhere to a set form of rules the way that we've, you know, operated in the past, we don't, we've never adopted Robert's rules, so we don't have that. We have it as a guide, but we, we don't really adopt those, so, uh, no, we don't have any sort of set of, of guidelines to look to, either procedurally or for any code of conduct.
Does anyone else on the commission have any comments with regard to what Ms., Commissioner Glassman has said? All right, um-
Well, I mean, I, I do, but I, I don't have, I haven't really thought through this. Um, I guess if we're bringing a resolution, I will think through it before I give my comments.
What, say it again?
Said, I guess if we're bringing a resolution to the nighttime meeting, I'll try to think through it a little bit more before I bring my comments, um, or unless you're asking me if I support a resolution, and maybe we won't bring a resolution, and I need to kind of think through it rather quickly and give you my thoughts.
Well, I don't know if it's a legal resolution, that's why I asked Mr. Wallow if this is something-
Yeah, I mean, what am I supposed to do? What do you need my input on?
No, well, you, I, I would need direction from the commission, whether even to prepare an instrument in, in that regard. I mean, that would be really the only way that you all speak in one voice, and with any sort of formality, would be by resolution. Um, I mean, you can publicly say what you want, and, and that, of course, is a matter of public record, um, but to formalize it, a, a resolution would be it, but I, unless I get direction from a majority of the commission to do anything, uh, that, that's, I guess, the initial determination to be made.
Okay, so if you're asking for my opinion on whether I should think, whether I think Alan should prepare a resolution, I, I, I will say I do not think, from my perspective, Steve, I don't think you're racist. I don't really understand the perspective of maybe the African-American community, so it's hard for me to say what someone from that community may think, but from my perspective, I don't think you're racist, uh, but I also would say I probably don't support a censure because I do think we're able to say things, and sometimes it might just be how we feel. Um, but then, I mean, what's the difference between how we feel and, and, and an accurate statement? I don't know. Sometimes that line is, is blurred. I mean, I've had my feelings hurt, you know, and I've just kind of gone with it. It's, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't know. This, I'm kind of confused on this. I would probably say, I, like I said, I don't support that level, but at the same time, I don't believe you are racist, so I don't know what I'm left with.
Well, I'm not really asking for people to tell me whether they believe I'm racist. Uh, I mean, that, to me, is almost as absurd as the comments. I'm just saying that I found that the language was so egregious and so offensive that it deserved to be called out as such, that's all. Um, and that's why I had asked, uh, and I am asking for Alan to be able to prepare. It does, to me, rise to the level of, uh, censure, because that's what censure is. It's calling out behavior that just is so, so egregious, um, that it needs to be called out with the hope and the intent that we never have to listen to those kinds of words again, leveled at any one of us on the commission. There's a, there's a difference between an opinion and what I heard in those words. It, it, there is, there is a line. There's a, there's just a difference between an opinion and what was said, uh, at those two meetings, two different meetings in a row. As I mentioned, I let the one go, but then it got, to me, it became so, so disturbing that it did rise to the level of, uh, being called out. That's all. But I, 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 I respect everybody's opinion on this, it's okay.
Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts you want to share?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, so it was, that was, uh, very hard for me, um, needing to hear the words that were being said, um, and, uh, I think was just, um, sad, I guess. I felt sad, and, and, um, and it was, you know, there was, uh, both, you know, folks saying some, some things that were hard, hard for me. Um, I think it is important to call it out, um, and I think it is important to, um, say how you, how you feel, Commissioner, and the, I think it, those words that were shared, both sides were not who I think we are and, and each, each of you is. Um, I think that having some form, and it, it sounds like we don't have any form of, um, I don't know, kind of guidelines. So Alan, you're saying there's no, since we haven't adopted Robert's rules, there's no general-
Nothing that we've, that we have formally in the past. I mean, some jurisdictions have codes of conduct, you know, that, I think Congress has a code of conduct. I don't think you're supposed to directly address, you know, a particular member or disparage, or, so there are codes of conduct out there, we haven't done a full review. I know some cities do.
So I think we should have a code of conduct. Um, I really do. I think it's, it's helpful for folks to know how we are supposed to behave and, uh, and understand a standard for all of us, um, for that. So I think that would be helpful, and I think in the meantime, it's important for us to share when we feel like each other have not lived up to just the expectation of congeniality and camaraderie. Um, but I don't, I don't, um, I'm not there that, um, a, a censure is, is what we need to do at, at this point. Um, I would do want to establish some good standards and ways we can work together. I think that'd be helpful. Mayor?
If I want to say one thing, Mayor, if we do develop that, I still think there has to be plenty of opportunity for us to give our opinions without being persecuted.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, I think if I say something, even if you don't like it, you know, I can say it, if it's, if it's my position, so I just want to be careful when we develop that. I think we can do it in a, in a good way, just let's just be careful because we don't come from a different-
And I think it's being, I agree, and I think it's allowing us to be passionate and, um, convicted in our responses and a level of decorum and expression that is appropriate. So I, I agree, I think we can do both. Yeah, I agree.
And I always feel that, you know, when we do have a discussion, we need to focus on the issue and not the people. And, um, I think, I think that in other, in other situations where, where we lose sight of that, you know, I may disagree with something that any one of you may say, but I don't feel I need to attack you, you know? And, uh, and I really feel, you know, that was, I personally felt that was totally wrong. It was, it's, it was out of bounds, and, um, and, and I've seen other commissions in other cities where commissioners, um, uh, you know, the, the decorum is, uh, is just thrown out the window. And, um, and I've been on multiple commissions in this city. I've, you know, the first commission I sat on, there was a lot of heated exchange between, um, between people. Um, it was often difficult to sit through meetings like that because of the back and forth and the, the, the attacks, um, between members of the commission. Um, so, you know, I don't want to sit through that, um, and I know the persons involved don't want to sit with that. Um, and I, and honestly, you know, Robert, I just think that, you know, I, I, please, if you can, I don't want you to feel like we're attacking you, but it's just, it's just, you know, it's hurtful sometimes when we have to, you know, we're the brunt of a lot of your anger sometimes and, and your, and your, you know, advocacy, but, you know, but the advocacy has to be towards the issue and not the person. And, um, and I think that, you know, I don't want Fort Lauderdale to ever, you know, fall into the trap of where, you know, we feel it's okay to, to really stoop to a level of, of personal attacks. I think that when that happens, it's a signal that, that person is losing, you know, losing ground on, on, on getting their point across with regard to the issue. Whenever you attack the, the individual, it means that you're losing the argument. Um, so, uh, I kind, I respect what Commissioner Glassman is seeking, um, you know, he felt personally attacked, um, uh, I don't think any of the things that were, he was accused of had even made any sense because, you know, a lot of Progresso does contain a number of members of the African-American community, and this was something he wanted to keep, and so did the members of that community. Uh, they stood up here at the podium and said, "We want to stay in District Two." So to say you wanted to diversify your district by inclusive, including members of, of multiple races, I don't think is a signal of racism, I think it's the opposite. But nonetheless, um, you know, I think that we need to set a standard. I don't know if, you know, you can codify anything you want, but, you know, the reality is it depends upon who we are as people. And this city commission, um, this particular commission, I think, has always maintained a level of decorum, for the most part, that other commissions, uh, wish they had. And I would like to hope that going forward, we would continue to maintain that level of integ- integrity and respect for one another that, um, that helps this commission get through the business that we're, we've been elected to do. I know when people see this on TV, or if they're here in the audience, they don't want to sit through that stuff. They don't, they're offended by it. They walk out, they turn off their TV, you know, they say, "Oh, business as usual, politicians are at it again." You know, we saw the same thing last week in Miami when they were, when they were discussing the stadium, they were attacking each other, you know? It's, it's not Fort Lauderdale, this is not who we are. So, um, I personally-
I did, I did get a public flogging on Inter Miami, just for the record, so I-
Was the difference of opinion?
Just to remind everybody, yes. I thought that was personal, and I thought it was pretty inappropriate, and I probably had a hundred emails and texts sent in, too.
Well, you could say that, but we were attacking the issues, we weren't attacking-
Well, I think I was pretty much a little personal, too, but yeah.
We were trying to point out there was a difference of opinion.
Let's be careful when we start saying other people are doing it and we're not, because I think, I think there are people in the public who have thought they were attacked. I think I personally have been attacked, but let's just, let's just be careful, because before we-
Yeah, but Commissioner, when we brought up the thing regarding David Beckham, the whole point of that was to point another side of the facts that, that we felt that were not being conveyed. We were not attacking you personally, I was not attacking you personally, I was trying to point out other, I was trying to point out the facts that we saw in the, uh, with regard to the issue. I did not say that, you know, Commissioner Maritis was a racist, I didn't say Commissioner-
You didn't say that word, but there was probably some other word.
I didn't call you a name, I was trying to convey other facts, so, um, I don't, you know, I was never intended to attack you personally.
I understand that's what you're saying, but maybe that's not what I heard, so there are other ways to communicate versus directly saying something, so let's just, I'm just saying, let's, let's be careful. It was discrediting to me, all the work that I've done, the work that my neighbors asked me to do. It was, it discredited everything I had done for that project, and, you know, it, it may not even happen, but I felt very personally attacked for those 30 minutes of the PowerPoint presentation. I'm just saying, we've all probably inadvertently hurt each other, and you may not, you know, it might not be a very targeted word, but it, there are some actions, there are some slights, there are some, there are ways that we've all dug in a little bit. Maybe not me, I think I've actually been pretty nice.
Okay.
Commissioner, I would say, though, again, as I said earlier, there's a different level here of discourse. What you're saying now in terms of being what you thought was attacked is not, it's just not the same, it's not the same egregiousness, it's not someone telling you, it's not someone telling you, "You stole property from black people and you're a racist." That's a whole different level than what anyone might have said about your approach to Beckham.
I know, that's, that's-
You have to listen to those words, maybe they're not as serious to you as they are to me, but those are serious words of accusation. Those are harmful, hurtful words, because as I said earlier, if one person in this city believed what McKenzie said, then that's really a shame. That's a shame. So it, that's just a different level of discourse. I'm calling out a level of discourse that's not the same as criticizing you, as the mayor did, for actions that you might have taken against Inter Miami. It's just a whole nother discussion, that's all. It's another level.
I understand, that's your perspective, I'm gonna say-
It is my perspective.
I'm gonna say I equal, I felt as offended as maybe you felt, or, you know, two weeks ago.
I, I'm obviously not making myself clear, I apologize. I'm good, we're done, thanks, next topic, we're good, I'm good, I'm good.
Go ahead, do as he pleases, you're the chair, that's your wingman.
Okay, Commissioner, Vice Mayor, you, you wanted to bring something up?
Yeah, um, just had a, um, want to get feedback on a, for a walk-on possibly for tonight, uh, addressing the, um, you know, unprecedented attack on choice and women's right to choose for abortion that, uh, not only has happened with our governor, um, but now with a, a draft ruling in the Supreme Court. So I wanted to see if, uh, I forget the process for this, but just asking if we could, uh, I could bring forward a resolution about that tonight.
Well, what, what exactly are you looking for the resolution to state?
It would state our opposition to, uh, the, um, just horrendous bill the governor signed into place that's, um, limiting, uh, ability of women to have choice, uh, around their reproductive rights, um, including, uh, not having the choice for, in cases of incense and, uh, rape, incest and rape.
So you're talking, you want to address the state law, the statute that was recently passed, or the proposed, um, Supreme Court decision, which has not yet been released?
Yeah, I'm happy to focus on the state.
Okay. Um, so which aspect of the state statute are you, are you opposed to the entire statute or just aspects of it?
Yeah, the entire statute.
Okay. Um, I have not read the statute, I do know that it has, it limits, uh, abortions to after 15 weeks, I remember hearing that, and there's no exceptions. Um, do you have any thoughts on, on how you would craft something?
Um, we, we've, we've received a preliminary draft on that, as we typically do when these issues are brought up. Um, we did need to do some fact-checking, um, I had already given back some comments to the Vice Mayor- I had already given back some comments to the Vice Mayor. I just, I mean, we can try, I just don't know how quickly I, we're able to get you a good-looking resolution by tonight, but we can try.
Is it time-sensitive? Can, can we work on it between now and the next meeting if we decide to go forward with this?
Yeah, happy to, I, I think it's in a format that's pretty close, but yeah, if we need more time, that's, that's fine too. Mayor?
Okay. I mean, I think, I think what the point you're raising has become particularly acute since the Supreme Court is now, I haven't even, I mean, I haven't read the Supreme Court decision, it hasn't really been published yet, and so I don't know what it's, what it, I mean, everyone says it overturns Roe versus Wade, but what does that mean? Does that mean it sends the decisions back to each state to decide? It doesn't make abortions illegal because Roe versus Wade didn't make it, you know, I don't think, I don't think that would be the impact of...
It sends it back to the state?
It would negate the federal, negate the federal law allowing federal const...
The constitutional right. So it would go back to each state then?
Correct.
Right.
Haven't read it.
Exactly, it's not been a decision yet. So, so maybe we should just fo, if you want to do something, to focus just on the state law, which is egregious in itself.
Correct.
Okay, so perhaps between now and the next meeting, we could craft something, and, and you can work with the city manager's office, and we'll see whether or not this is something the commission wants to approve or not approve.
Great.
Yeah, and, and Ben, if you want it to happen at the next meeting, I fully, please go ahead. I do have to say I won't be at the next meeting, so, I mean, I'd love to kind of give my thoughts, but if you want it, go ahead without me. But if you want to wait till the first meeting...
You're not gonna be at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't. I have a conflict.
Is that tonight or into...
In two weeks, I won't be here, May seventeenth, but I'll be at the first meeting in June. But if you want to bring it, please move forward.
We'll see if Allen can...
But if you want to wait, I'd be happy to give my thoughts.
That'll be a good day, that'll be a good day to decide what we want to do with Lockhart.
Yeah, you certainly can. We already had a four-one, so...
Mark your calendar.
Do you, do you have any thoughts you want to share now? Or do you...
No, I mean, I need to read the Supreme Court also. I mean, I think what it does is what you said, it just kind of gives, uh, gives the states the ability to decide, which the states are making a lot of decisions, so, you know, maybe you want to talk about both when, when you kind of think it through. So maybe it gives us more time to think about both.
Okay, all right.
Why don't we just let the mayor send a letter on behalf of the city, as opposed to putting something in front of me, a resolution, which I don't believe in? And we still convey the message, and it's diplomacy and it's respect, um, for your colleagues instead of trying to put a piece of paper in front of us that we gotta, you know, vote on, or I probably won't be here, Heather probably won't be here, but I think a letter from you would just be, in my opinion, if he can accept it, just as good as, uh, asking me to, to, um...
But I have to have everyone's, I can't...
No, but you can write a letter saying, "Here's what you think."
I can write a letter, but I have, I won't write a letter as a mayor until I have...
You've written many letters on, on what you think.
No, but not with, not without...
Listen, if you think it's...
Not without you folks.
I'm not doing any voting on any resolutions going anywhere outside of the city.
I think I wrote a letter, uh, supporting the, uh, Paris, um, um, the Paris, uh...
Climate, climate, yeah.
Climate, Climate Accords. I did write a, I did, I did sign on to that as a mayor.
And I think that's fine.
Yeah.
But when you ask me, "Do you want me to vote?", I'm saying, "But if you do it, I think that respectfully, you know, conveying the message, you know..."
But I think the commission wants to be on record. I don't think it's just about a mayor.
I'm not going on record.
This commission, there, there are members of this commission...
Right, so I just offered an alternative for me to sit here and, 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 and be a part of it, but, uh, I can't be in the room, because if I'm in the room, I gotta vote.
I fully understand that. I fully understand that. Okay, so if you can do something by tonight, fine.
That's it, yeah.
All right, okay. Is there any further business to the commission? Okay, see you, uh, oh, there's the Israeli consulate is coming at five o'clock, if you all want to join. I believe they're coming into the eighth floor, so, uh, um, everyone's welcome to participate in that, and, uh, and then otherwise, the meeting starts at six tonight. Thank you, everybody.